We're waiting for you.
Okay, this is the regularly scheduled town in Antucket zoning board of appeals meeting, Thursday, December 8th. Can I get an approval of the agenda as a motion to approve the agenda, written and amended, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera?
No moves.
All right, Kiram made a motion. Everybody want to second that?
I'll second it.
Mrs. Seconded, all of any further discussion? No, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, how about the minutes of November 11th? I read them, they look fine to make.
I didn't read them.
Yeah, it's okay to me.
Looks okay to two of us.
Yep, that's fine.
Yeah, okay. Somebody want to make a motion on the minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, the grant of approval as written, okay. Any further discussion?
Nope.
No. All those in favor say aye. Okay. All right, so getting right down to business. 1490, 1499 and 02122, Dennis E. Dias, or E. Dias, sorry about that. Suzanne Gale, three triple drive.
Hi, yes, Mr. Chairman. Dennis Dias requesting to take rescind the variances put on my lot after it was changed from two acre zoning to one acre zoning at the last town meeting. And as you requested, I did go to the meeting for the planning board and got approval from them first.
Okay, so I believe you.
Have it if you want to see it, sir.
Yeah, that should just be part of the file. Were you there, Eleanor?
I was not, but I just have literally issued by the planning board.
Would you like to see it, sir?
Yeah, please, thank you.
Chairman, I was there.
Were you? Please be advised, planning board, meeting December 7th, considered to be above reference subdivision modification vote unanimously to rescind and vacate the zoning board of appeals decisions granted in the ZBA file. I thought they were, so they were rescinding and vacating our decisions?
Our decisions?
Did you see that? I thought they were vacating and rescinding their own decisions.
Yeah, it's supposed to be their decision, not ours.
No, they modified the existing decision, that's taken off. This was literally just happened the other night and the planning board minister just issued this.
The planning board approved the modification because the restrictions are no longer necessary due to recent zoning change. Again, we had no problem with this, it was just we wanted to get things in order. I'm not sure this letter really states what should it? Amen.
We can get that corrected, it was just issued literally 10 minutes ago.
We love it when things are issued 10 minutes ago, because generally a great deal of thought goes into them, but, go ahead.
Is anyone here to speak about this?
Anybody here to speak about this one? No.
No, I'll make a motion, I agree with the application, the condition, and it gets mod, the letter gets modified.
Right.
Are you going to activate me? That's a question.
Oh, so, because...
Kiram was not here last month.
Right. I can do that. So Kiram, you just flat out worked here and didn't listen or read in, obviously.
I did not.
So was...
Susan, myself, you and Michael must have been, so other Jeff and...
Jeff and Jeff.
So Jeff, you were here and listened?
And Jim was here.
Okay, so those would be the five sitting, voting members.
Jeff is going to be the...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, so Michael's made the motion to grant the relief as requested, and Susan seconded it. Any further discussion?
Nope.
No, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. May I...
Yeah, yeah. Or, do you have a, yeah, thanks.
Great.
Thank you. Okay, moving on.
I'm out on this one, and then come back.
Okay. So, yeah, Susan's not on this one. Mark Gore was, so, and Kiram, obviously you weren't here again, so. 3716 CHC Development LLC, 7 Primrose Avenue. Other Stephen, okay. For the applicant.
Stephen, go to the applicant. And, Mr. Chairman, I could run through a reminder and give you our position and present the materials, or I don't know if you want to let the building commissioner go first, or maybe we'll take turns.
Why don't you just give us a quick run through?
Okay, so...
Refresh our memory.
The property has multiple structures on it, and one of those structures is made up of two essentially, like, one's a pool equipment stall and one's a little bathroom stall, and there's a connector between them that's just a roof with no walls, and there's now a question as to whether or not that's creating a ground cover issue. The structure was originally permitted with, at the HTC with some doors, and then those doors were removed, and I have the HTC approval showing that those doors were to be removed, and then it was applied for it with the building permit, and I have the file copy from the building permit that shows that it was applied for and approved with, with no doors and just open. And I'm happy to ask those out.
Please.
So here are...
Thank you.
The building permit, and here's the HTC, is showing that we applied to have those removed.
There you go.
Couple of things that you should just notice from the building department application is that the ground cover that's shown on the proposed building permit is all, is showed for just the two small portions of the structure, it's clearly identified as not being a free ground cover shed, it's shown as a building with ground cover. It's also identified as, in the plans, as having the equipment in it, and it's identified through the Board of Health as recognizing that because it has plumbing that it counts as a bedroom, even though it's, there's no bedroom in it, but it counts against the ground cover count. So there was never a suggestion that it was just a free ground cover shed, but unfortunately it was sort of vaguely defined in the building department application as a storage shed, and what that we meant was as the, for the pool equipment. And I think that that, there may have been some confusion on that, and the staff issued the building permit instead of, even though we applied for a building permit, it was issued as a shed zoning permit with no ground cover. And that, I think, led to the situation that we're in. The person from the, you know, construction company that picked it up didn't notice the difference, probably doesn't know the difference, and everything was constructed as was applied for in the permits, and potentially not as was approved in the, in the, was constructed as, as per the applications, but potentially not under the permit. When we went to go close it out, it was noticed that this zoning permit was not a building permit, and we went to change it, and we went to change it is when Mr. Butler, the building commissioner, pointed out his concerns and rescinded the permit because it was a proposal for what he was now determining to be over ground cover, and we are now here appealing that decision. So we have two, essentially two bases to appeal the decision. The first one is that this overhang between the two enclosed areas should just count as a porch, or a breezeway, or a gazebo, and I would say it's a porch, but it kind of could be any of the three. And those three things, what they have in common is, one, they're not defined terms in the building code, and two, they are all exempt from ground cover. If you look at building with Nantucket in mind, the definition for a porch is a shelter or entrance to serve as a semi-enclosed space usually roofed open and generally open-sided. And I think that's what we have here, a generally open-sided roofed area. So that's one request that we're making, that this just be determined, that the, not the enclosed space, but that the overhang connecting the two be determined to be a porch or a breezeway that would not count against ground cover. And then in the alternative, we would ask for variance relief because we're about 100 square feet over, and the only way to fix it essentially is to rip the roof off, which I don't know that that's really serving much purpose, and would be detrimental. I'd also notice that it, note that if you look at the definition of ground cover, ground cover is defined as what, as measured based on the horizontal plane at grade, and here there's nothing there, there is nothing at grade. You know, it's just the overhang. There's no, there's no there there to measure as ground cover. So what the building commissioner is doing is essentially implying, based on this roof, that there's something down there when there's not. So I think that there's substantial ability for you to find that it is not something that counts as ground cover, or that this, if it was to count as ground cover, that there's a minor, a nominal overage, and that the variance would be justified. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, Mr. Butler.
Yes, there were a few mistakes made...
I know who you are, but will you identify yourself?
Yes, I'm Steve Butler, building commissioner of town in Antucket. There were a few mistakes made along the way, starting with the applicant filling out the, filling bit wrong, and then accepting the zoning permit instead of the building permit. But that being said, the easiest, well, straight to the point is whether or not this building is two buildings, which it's not, it's one building, it's under a roof, it's pretty clear. When you look at it, I think you've all seen it.
Mm-hmm.
And it's pretty clearly it's not a porch within the common usage, and when you look around Nantucket or anyplace else to see what porches are, this isn't a porch. Likewise with a breezeway. Breezeway is a defined term, and it's supposed to go between two buildings. This does not go between two buildings, this is one building. So whatever this area is, if you go back to the original HTC application, it's intended to be one building because they had the doors on it. It remains one building, and without a breezeway. So the only two things that are exempted from ground cover are breezeways and porches. Neither one of those, I mean, I think it's pretty evident when you take a look at the building, and you look at around what breezeways are in common uses around here, and the same thing with porches. And as far as the application of ground cover at grade, I think that's just totally contrary to how we've been measuring ground cover for years here. It's, it's a projection down from those outer extremities or exterior walls to grade measured there. It's just a statement of how, or where the ground cover is being measured. I think that's a meaningless argument, so I would hope you uphold my decision. The grant of variance, I think, would send a very bad precedent, and I hope you, like I said, uphold my decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question, Ed.
Yeah.
So the original permit was submitted on February 23rd. You did not remove the barn doors till August 30th? Not, not to you, sorry, to, to the applicant, I'm sorry, Steve. The barn doors didn't get removed till August 30th from the HTC application? That's the date of this HTC application removing the barn doors?
Good afternoon, Chip Webster on behalf of the applicant.
So I'm just looking, trying to figure out the timeline.
Right, yes.
So you originally submitted February 23rd, I'm assuming, did they, did the drawings have the barn doors at this time?
Yes, they did.
Well, then, these drawings don't show barn doors on what was submitted to the building board.
No, 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 okay, so the HTC approval had barn doors, the drawings that we submitted did not have the barn doors.
Even though the HTC application to remove the barn doors didn't happen till August?
That's right. So just so, so to answer your question more clearly, there were, there was original application in February. The drawings, the, we applied for the permit with did not show the barn doors, but the HTC approval that accompanied the building permit package did.
Yeah, I don't understand that, they should match.
So that wasn't, that's what I'm saying, so that was, that was an error, and then it was also, it wasn't picked up at our, our point, or at the building department's point. So that, that, so when, so when it came for the final sign-off, and Steve said, wait a second, this is just a, you know, it's a shed permit, you have to come back and apply for a building permit, which is what we had thought we'd applied for, he said also, your HTC approval doesn't match what you submitted. So we went to HTC to get the approval without the barn doors at that time, so that they did match. So we, so that the package that we submitted the second time had the HTC approval without the doors, as well as the construction drawings, or permit package without the doors.
Okay, and then the other question is, your site plan shows these as two separate structures.
I'm sorry, what's that?
Your site plan shows them as two separate structures.
The, are they as built by Nantucket surveyors?
No, your site plan, it says storage shed, but they're clearly shown as two separate boxes, not one footprint.
I, I don't know what you're trying, is that the one that Paul Santos prepared, perhaps?
No, it's your, it's your site plan.
Okay.
Chip Webster.
Okay, the site plan that went with the...
I, I don't know, it was in the old file, I don't know what it went with, it was in the original application.
Okay.
So it's, it's just, I mean, I, I see it as...
I think, I think it's...
As one building because of the fact that it's labeled as one structure.
Right. I mean, I think it's, it's fair to say that there were some, some hiccups or mistakes on all parts along the way. I think the real question is whether or not you, this should be, this area specifically with overhang, it should be interpreted as ground coverage or not. And I think that's really what we're trying to get clarity on. It's our belief that it isn't because it doesn't have any structure at grade, and it's certainly not enclosed.
Well, if I'm hearing you correctly, Lisa, then I think I agree with it. It's too, it should have been applied for as, it's either one big building...
Or it's two separate buildings that don't have a roof that connects them.
Right.
Completely.
Or the roof shouldn't connect.
That's right.
If it's one big building, it's, it's sort of hard to get to the point where that's not ground cover.
Well, I think it's pretty common for a building to have portions of that building that are not ground covered, specifically a porch.
Yeah, but I, I, we agree, oh, go ahead.
Right, I'm, I'm sorry.
Well, I agree with you 100%, but normally, the, the entire structure is connected. If there's a disconnected portion that is connected by porch, that's considered two different buildings. And I guess...
Well, I mean, we could...
Solution would be to apply as two different buildings.
Well, as I was trying to say, that could be a solution, would be to apply as two separate structures, if that would...
Well, the question, I think, is if he had applied as two separate structures to begin with, and was got approved, and then came back with the breezeway on, it's now connecting two separate structures. It's not connecting one, in my opinion, so...
I think the difference of that, though, architecturally, I think that would be, I mean, I know we're getting to semantics of what a breezeway is, but I think then the breezeway would not be the same dimension as the roof of both of these structures. The breezeway would be more of a connector. I think, I mean, I could be at, in a minority here, but I really see that this is one building. It shares a roof, it was applied for as one structure. I don't see, I mean, I do think it's a dangerous precedent to give a variance for something like this, where it's a total, I think a different interpretation of what a porch is, of what we know as a porch in our minds. And I'm not saying I necessarily disagree with that completely, but I just, I do think it's a dangerous variance to get into.
Well, if I might add one thing, so the definition of ground coverage starts by saying it's a structure at grade that's enclosed, and then it goes on to list examples of that, and it references examples such as breezeways, porches, gazebos, et cetera. But I don't think the listing of examples means that something would have to be completely one of those. I think the real definition is that it's the portion of the structure that's unenclosed, it, you know, it's measured at grade.
Well, I think there's an understanding, I mean, I think you can't really define, completely define in the zoning bylaw every example of what would and would not be ground covered, so I think that that's a hard argument. So I think it's more of an understanding what porches tend to be on buildings. You know, they tend to be an appendage that's added on to a building as opposed to a roof that is connecting two buildings. So, and, and I think I might, I'm probably in the minority, but I really don't see this as, is a porch.
Well, that's what I, that's what I was trying to say, is even if it's not a porch, if it meets the base definition of ground coverage, which is, it's not, there's no building footprint at grade and it's not enclosed. I was just saying that the porch is an example of that, as is a gazebo, as is a breezeway, those are cited as examples of, but I don't know that would necessarily have to be a porch, is what I'm trying to say.
I think what, what Chip is saying is that it might not even be a structure that needs to be exempt, or this portion, right? I mean, frankly, there's seven different ways you could interpret this, all of which are within your discretion because they're all undefined. You could determine that there's nothing at grade here to, so it's not a structure for ground cover purposes there. You could determine that this is a, just a connector between two buildings, and that it should be considered a breezeway. You could determine that it's an open area with a roof that could be a porch. You could determine that it, that this structure, that this portion is a gazebo, or, you know, like, there's plenty of leeway for you to find a reasonable way to have it not be ground covered without granting a variance. Or you could side with the building commissioner and make us rip it off.
Well, I just think it, it opens a dangerous conversation where this, this is two small buildings connected by one roof. It just opens the door for much bigger interpretations of what that is. A much wider roof structure that takes a 20-foot by 20-foot wide room, and then connects it to another 20-foot by 20-foot wide room, same roof structure.
Yeah.
And when, at what point does that not become ground covered?
So, I agree with you 100%, and your expectation of reasonableness in the zoning code is unbased, baseless, but a good point for the staff to do at town meeting, that there are, there's all these definite, there's, there's all these exceptions from the zoning code that are undefined, so perhaps adding some definition would be a good idea here. I think that with, frankly, with the increase of pools, and the increase of pool cabanas, and the increase of shaded structures to, or structures to create some shade for those, this issue is coming up all the time, and sometimes it gets flagged and sometimes it doesn't. And I think, you know, there are lots of examples of this out there, none of whom really wanted to volunteer to be, you know, held up as, as the next enforcement action in case we lose. But this is a, this is an issue that I think is ripe for the addition of some, some definition or some limitation or some regulation. But I also think that the lack of that doesn't necessarily mean that it should be held against my client. The...
Well, I think what happens is people just continue to try to push the envelope.
I mean, arguably, you could have, on two different ends of your lot, two buildings or structures or whatever.
Sure.
And the whole lot could then be connected by unenclosed roof.
Yeah.
It makes no sense.
Well, that's, that's right. So technically, and what's absurd, is that I think that's allowed. You could have a gazebo right now that's 2,500...
I don't think it's allowed, I don't think the zoning bylaw allows for that. I think that's where your interpretation of ground coverage goes a little too far.
But, well, I, but I think that the bylaw allows for gazebo without any regulation of how big it could be.
But gazebo is a defined term.
Yeah, but I could have a...
It's an open, it's a building that's...
You could have a 2,500 square foot gazebo and it wouldn't count.
Well, I think the, the limiting factor here, ideally to my scenario of connecting one roof to the whole, oh, is the HTC. So I think maybe at some point, to Steve's idea, is that your, the applicant's plans should include the whole picture, that we're not counting this as ground cover, we're thinking this is a porch. I'm not trying to kick the can down the road, but if the...
The HTC wouldn't care about, they don't look at the zoning.
Well, if they didn't construe it as a porch, if they said, no, this isn't a porch.
Right.
You're, you're saying, the argument is that it's a porch.
Right.
Well, they applied to the HTC as one structure, so it is one structure.
This is my point.
Yeah.
This is my point, as us, not as usual, that's a little cynical, but, you know, not all of the information is given, whether to us or it's the HTC or to them ever.
Right.
So in the vacuum of the HTC, they probably think, oh, this counts as ground cover, this isn't a porch, this is one big building.
Yeah.
It's got one roof, and, so I don't think it's reasonable to then come here and say, oh, well, now that we've gotten that, they didn't really know what we were doing, and we're going to call it a porch now.
Oh.
So, because I think, to Lisa's point, you applied for this as one big building with big barn doors, as of one building.
Right.
So with one roof structure, there wasn't even an attempt to differentiate the, the porch roof.
In any way.
It's all one big roof, so it is a little hard to stomach.
Yeah, well, I, I...
As porch.
I, I do get your point, but I think there's a flip side of that, Ed, which is that due to the variances of jurisdiction, there's a lot of things that are defined one way in one board and another way on another board, and, you know, what the HTC might consider it doesn't really matter for the zoning board, or the CONCOM, or whatever, you know, I mean, the, the HTC requires people to put fake doors on houses, but that doesn't mean, you know, that that's, makes a lot of sense from other points of view, from the building code or whatever. In fact, the fire department hates it. But, you know, the, whether, if we had labeled this as porch, I don't know that the HTC would have said, oh, because you've labeled it as a porch, you now need to differentiate in the roof pitch of, of this building that's like 14 feet long. I don't, they would have said, we don't care, it's too small, it's a little thing out in the back, no one can see it.
I agree with you about that. I don't think what the HTC, letting the HTC know it's a porch or not, it doesn't matter. To me, it's the fact that it was applied for as one structure. It is one structure of two connected, I mean, that's not to say you can't have a rectangular building, say you put your two sheds together and had an eight-foot porch that went off the front, then that would clearly be, to my mind, in my, my maybe simplistic mind, that that is a porch.
Yeah.
This, to me, is a building that has, that has, that shares one roof.
It's still one structure, though. Both of the, both of those examples are one structure, some enclosed and some unenclosed. So in your example where they're together, it's same square foot is enclosed, same square foot is not, so why would that be okay? Because it looks like a porch.
Because I don't think it would be the same square foot as unenclosed.
Well, you know, we could extend it, and then make it, make it come forward, and then it would be a porch. I mean, it would be bigger, but it would be more traditional. I don't know, I, frankly, I think a lot of this is about semantics. I think it was clearly that there was a bunch of tripping in how this was permitted, some by the applicant, some by the, the building department, and what we'd like to do now is come up with a resolution that makes sense. I think it's, it's clearly something that you could define as a, as a porch or as a breezeway, and if you'd like to make sure that that's not abused by having the zoning code amended at town meeting, I would encourage you to talk to the staff about that. I think that is actually a better precedent than a variance, although I'd take one.
I don't, I, I don't think that we're going to be inclined to grant a variance on this one.
Right.
My guess, so maybe you should go to the town meeting.
I'm, I'm happy to.
Grant, I, put a article forward that makes, clearly defines this type of structure, because we've seen others like this.
I know.
And everybody's pushing the envelope as, as, as not ground cover. Doesn't count as ground cover.
Right, but, but I think in this case, that that is true, that this...
I, I'd actually be interested to see what the original HTC application looked like with the barn doors. Do you have that?
It was, it was the same, but with a barn door.
With doors that could close it off.
Yeah.
As one, one big building with doors.
Correct.
I don't think we're trying to argue that it's not one building, I think...
But once it has doors on it, with the doors, it becomes a structure and the whole thing becomes ground coverage.
Correct.
That's my argument. So clearly there was an intent to make this whole thing one building.
Well, there's also one common foundation at one point.
No, no, it's the top.
What was that represented? 4-1 framing, I mean, roof framing, but then the 4-1 framing, wouldn't this be...
This is the one that we already have.
I mean, that's the foundation, is it?
This is to the previous approval?
I think here, I think you see, I mean, at one point, these were, you know, these were connected to the deck as well.
Okay.
It's one foundation.
Yeah, it's, well, it is, it's, I mean, I can tell you it's not one foundation.
Well, it's not anymore, but it was originally intended to be.
This is the wrong one, this shows the barn doors gone?
Yeah.
I want to see that with the barn doors.
Is it?
Oh, that little one, okay, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, that was the previous approval.
Yeah, so this is clearly one, I mean, it was one building.
So, but, you know, if I had a house and a garage and a roof connected them, you wouldn't count that as...
If it was a small roof, like a breezeway, which is seven, eight feet wide, the definition of what a breezeway is.
Well, this is only, how wide is this? It's only six or eight...
We can't get hung up on what it was intended, we have to deal with what it is now.
Yeah, I, I don't think it's a breezeway, I mean, if you look at the strict reading of what a breezeway is, this isn't a breezeway.
Yeah.
It's a primary dwelling to a secondary dwelling. So I don't think it falls under this, that, exception at all.
Mm-hmm.
Now, you could have a breezeway between non-dwellings, but...
You could have a two-story garage, but I think generally they're very narrow, I mean, they're not a continuous roof, by the definition... I mean, they're not a continuous roof by the definition of-
Well, from a design point of view, but from an HCC, from a zoning point of view, I don't know that that matters unless you say it doesn't.
But I mean, there are certain, certain definitions that I think people have in their mind of what a breezeway means.
I'm going to let Steve say something, please.
I mean, I think it's pretty clear with Justice Scott, it's not a breezeway, it's not a porch, and so therefore it counts as ground cover. It doesn't matter at the, there was this little discussion earlier, if you, well, if you built this building first, then if you built that building next and got a permit to put a roof on them, you know what, then it would be one structure, then it would be where we are right now.
Unless it would be a narrow connector.
Debating on whether or not it's a porch.
Right.
Or a breezeway. It's neither one of those. And as far as counting as ground cover, uh, and where you measure it, you would always, you've always measured ground cover at grade. I mean, that, it's been tweaked a little bit in the bylaw, but, uh, over the years, but it's always been measured at grade. And that, it goes back to a zoning board of appeals decision years ago with Bill Sherman that said, um, it's measured when the sun's at its zenith, so it shines down and whatever that shadow is right straight down, that's where you measure your ground cover. Again, that's been tweaked a little bit.
Yeah, because our porch is, you know.
It's, it's, once you have a roof, you got ground cover unless you're explicitly exempted as far as gazebos, certain types of sheds, breezeways and the like. And again, this isn't it. I would hope that you would just take action and uphold my decision.
I will say, I went out there, there is nothing at grade, it's a continuation, grade continued, the pool deck continues right through. There's no step up.
Oh, there's no deck.
There's no deck.
Got it.
It's just a continuation of the pool deck.
Frankly, I think it's also just an overhang, you know, because we don't measure from overhangs, we measure from foundation and corner boards. And the fact that this overhang happens to be extended doesn't, I think, make it ground cover. You know, if this just was four poles with a roof, it, it doesn't, it's not, it's just a, it's just a, it's just a shaded structure, it doesn't have anything at grade. And we don't measure ground cover by going down from the outside, we go from the foundation and the corner boards. There's no, there's no, there's no one who's standing on roofs going down from overhangs because overhangs are exempted. And that's all this is also.
Why can't it be an unenclosed breezeway? I think I'm, am I missing why it can't be that?
Well, just by definition breezeways aren't, aren't like this. I mean, breezeways are generally smaller, narrower structures that connect multiple buildings as opposed to one continuous roof line by definition.
But that, but that's not what it says in the zoning code, that's just sort of a design thing.
Well, since it is so clearly undefined as are many things, we have to hang our hat somewhere.
I mean, if I looked at breezeway, we could look up the definition of it, I don't, I think-
I thought we had the definition of breezeway.
Did you?
Well, here it says, we do have it here.
Right.
You know, like if you have a-
Primary, secondary dwelling, any such research shall have a minimum length of ten feet.
Or when used to connect.
If you have a hood, you know, an overhang to stop people from getting rained on when they, when they're fuddling for their keys, those can be three or four feet wide and they don't count as ground cover. This is just that kind of thing, it just protects you from the sun and the weather. It's not, there's nothing, there's no there, there except a roof.
Uh, Steve, how come, why can't this be called a breezeway in your mind?
Because it's not a breezeway. It's part of one structure. Typically breezeways connect two structures, two buildings. This is one building. Once you have one building, you can't have a breezeway. And I can't see how this could possibly be construed as two buildings. I have two buildings under the building code, it's two buildings, I, I, excuse me, it's one, it's one building under the building code, um, and so it's one building under zoning.
It's actually, oh, I was going to say, it's actually one building on the asphalt too. It's called a pool structure on the asphalt, it's listed as one structure. I mean, to your point.
Each part of the building is structurally dependent on the other.
Right.
Not that that makes total.
Now, Stephen, if they-
Totally have to have it that way, but it, it is.
If they had applied, it's two buildings, two, two separate applications.
Right.
Would we be having the same conversation?
The minute they put the roof between the two of them, we would be.
So arguably if you cut a saw blade-
Let's not get into little games.
I'm just, I'm asking.
No, I don't, I don't play little games.
Or you cut a foot between them so that there was threat.
When, when the time comes, I'll make my decision on that. But I'm not going to project some crazy little game plan.
Unfortunately, I think that's what's happening here in general. We're trying to define, uh, what is a porch.
Right, and the question really, question before you is pretty simple. Is this a breezeway or is it a porch? And am I right or am I wrong? That's really the fundamental question. Everything else is just everything else.
Porch is normally, I mean, I don't know, I mean, I guess there's no real definition of porch, but a porch in my mind has, doesn't, is open on, in the front often and the sides. It's not front and back. Do you know what I mean?
I don't either.
When you think of a traditional porch, it's, this is not that. And so, you know, it's hard.
I guess, I guess if we want to get to a place where we can vote, um-
You, you could-
It was applied for as one building.
Right.
It really doesn't meet the definition of breezeway. So it's-
It's either a porch.
It's either a porch or it's ground cover.
Well, not necessarily, it could be an overhang. Or, or it could be, or it could be a-
It could be a gazebo too, but it's not. So we don't have to go into the-
But you could also find that there, but you could, but you could find that there's no structure at grade to measure. Because it's not, you know, like, if you measure this at grade, you go around those two boxes and then the rest is just something, but it's not ground cover because under, really under the reading of the definition, you wouldn't measure it that way.
Well, how does everyone, did anybody else want to speak about this, by the way?
No.
How does everyone feel about this?
I don't feel strongly enough about it to go against what Steve's made of determination, I just, you know.
Fair enough. I think I could probably see my way set to the same idea. I mean, there's not, I'm not sure there's enough compelling argument to overturn what Steve-
I don't think, I don't, I don't see it, but-
Anybody else?
Let's vote.
All right. Uh, okay. So who's voting? One, two, three. Gareem, you, you were not, you were like four, five, the five of us. All right, so would somebody like to make a motion, but let's be careful there. Because the applicant is, uh, asking us to, help me out here Eleanor, if I stumble, is asking us to overturn, overturn the decision of the building inspector by making a determination that the unenclosed roof area of the pool cabana is a porch or gazebo and therefore does not count for ground cover. So, um, and then to the extent necessary in the alternative, applicants seek variance relief pursuant to section 139, 32, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, uh, if we make-
Just don't take action on it.
Or deny the appeal. We don't take action on the alternative.
To accept or deny the appeal.
Yeah, we're just accept, I guess we're simply voting as to whether or not to, um-
Uphold the appeal.
Yeah.
Right, uphold Steve's appeal.
Right. Or to deny the request, yeah.
So a yes vote would be to uphold Steve. Correct?
I guess it depends on how the motion's made. So someone make a motion and then we'll stumble and bumble forward somehow. Um, so we, yeah, somebody, if somebody makes a motion-
So I would make a motion to uphold the building commissioner's decision to deny this-
Suit of occupancy or the, the inter-
Don't, don't we want to, always want to vote to approve whether we're going to vote for it or not? Yeah, I mean, normally what we do is have a, a, a motion in the, in the affirmative that somebody, for instance, this is, this is not a motion, I make a motion to grant the relief as requested. So, I, in, in that example, a yay vote would be denying Stevens-
Right.
Would not uphold Steve's.
Okay.
A, a, a nay, correct?
I think you're right.
A nay vote would be, would-
Uphold Steve's decision.
Right.
Okay, and, and that would also take care of the variance request as well as the, um, because did you request a variance in the alternative?
I, I did.
Okay.
Well, I mean, we can vote on that as well.
But do we do that separately?
We can vote as, on that as-
So we'll do it separately.
Well, we would make a motion in the affirmative to grant the relief as requested in the alternative as a variance and then vote on that.
So I'll make that motion to grant the relief as requested.
Okay. So again, we're all clear on that? Am I doing that correctly, Eleanor?
You can do it, I believe you can make a motion to change anything.
Should, do you get the hand?
Marcus has his hand up.
Oh, go ahead Marcus, thank you.
Just for a minute, I may vote on that motion simply defeats the motion. Wouldn't resolve, if, if that is to uphold the building commissioner, then that should be the motion.
Okay.
If it's a grant relief, that should be the motion.
Fair enough.
Okay.
Then, um, somebody needs to make-
You started that motion, right? Jeff?
So the motion is to uphold the building commissioner's denial of-
Yes. And revocation of the building permit.
Correct. So I would make that motion.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Assuming we uphold the, the building commissioner's decision, um, and the applicant doesn't feel it, he wants to go through the town meeting, um, is there anything in place to allow the, this application, an application, but the, the actual building to stay where it is until after the decision's made at the town meeting?
They just wouldn't be able to get a final CO, right?
I would assume what is, that's what Steve was-
Yeah, we would, we wouldn't be able to obtain a CO in that, in that situation. And then it would be up to the zoning enforcement officer as to whether or not he wanted to bring an enforcement action. And not to speak for Marcus, but typically if there is a resolution pending in some reasonable time, he generally tries to accommodate that, although not endlessly.
Also if we, if we agreed to the variance of the ground cover.
Well, that, that, that's the alternative, yeah.
Then, it's the other one.
We really haven't discussed that at, at length, um, but we can after voting as to whether or not to uphold Steve.
To uphold Steve. Why don't we get that one done, right? Because that makes the definition of whether or not we have to even go on to the second one.
Fair enough. So, the motion's been made and seconded, seconded to uphold, uh, the building commissioner's decision to revoke the building permit. So, all those in favor of upholding Steve, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so that was unanimous. So then in the alternative, uh, we can discuss the notion of, of variance. And we really didn't discuss it, so how do we feel about that?
Well, I don't think it's a good idea to give a variance for ground cover, but that opens the door for-
I don't think we can do one, one and two.
I mean, it's, it's, it's a-
You ready to vote? Okay. I'm ready to vote myself. Is there anybody in the audience who wants to speak specifically about variance relief or additional ground cover? Go ahead.
Well, I think it's important to note that the original application showed that there was a bathroom and that there was enclosed space and we were issued a permit and it was constructed. So I think that the reason for granting the relief would be because, uh, I, I think there was an error on the part of the building department in not looking at the materials that were submitted and seeing that there was a bathroom here and issuing a zoning shed permit when it clearly from the very get-go showed that this was a bathroom and finished space. So I, that, that would be the reason I think that you should grant the waiver. Thank you.
Clearly that's not grants for grant of variance, there are statutory requirements for grants of variances, which we all know. This isn't even close to meaning those requirements. I don't think you have an option but to deny the variance. Thank you.
So you know-
Stephen, were you going to say something?
Go ahead.
Well, just that, there's a burden of removing this that I think outweighs the impact because the impact is basically nothing. It's a, maybe a hundred square feet or less of additional ground cover. It's not causing any negative impact on any butter, I don't know that it's visible to anybody. And I think that you could, in this situation, grant the variance if you chose to.
It's too bad because, I mean, I don't disagree with you, um, in a lot of ways and I think it's, you know, it is ridiculous to have to fix this in some way, but I just feel like it's, it's a really dangerous variance to grant, as is, as would have been the interpretation of what that space was. So I think it'd be hard for me to vote for the variance.
Anybody else?
I just have a question for Marcus.
Go ahead.
Marcus? Um, if, if the applicant doesn't get his variance here today and-
I, I, I'll just say that I'm conflicted in this case, so, uh, state audit and as such, I'm not all that.
Okay. Let me ask, if there was an enforcement issue with this application after this meeting, would you be the one issuing it?
Uh, possibly.
Okay.
I don't know where the conflict remains.
Well, I'm just wondering if the applicant, uh, lets the building department know that he's going for a zoning change to solve this issue, whether there would be, still be an enforcement issue between today and the town meeting.
Well, I think that would be up to the building commissioner.
Sure, it is up to them.
Okay.
I do feel your frustration at getting the building permit and, and with plans that were submitted, showed the roof connecting whatever.
And the plumbing and everything.
Now, that, that's frustrating when you get a building permit.
It's not acceptable, however, that's what applicants are trying not to make mistakes, but obviously we do. Unfortunately, we're all begging for it, something for the love. But it's, uh, what else for grant of variance?
I tend to agree, I don't, because I, I, I fear that people would roll the dice and see if we can get this through, and they didn't pick it up, oh, you gotta grant us a variance. So, um-
And that's not one of the, one of the stipulations for granting a variance. It's not because the building commissioner made a mistake. I mean, there are pretty specific-
No, but you could, you could say it was a harsh problem.
Yeah.
Yeah. Would you have to do more than that though? No? There'd be topographical reasons and-
A lot was a rectangle?
Yeah, I thought there were a lot more stringent requirements to meet.
Yeah, I, I, I think the variance is a tough one personally.
Oh, I do too.
But I feel you, I, I feel you.
I do, I feel, I feel.
I'm getting confirmed.
Right.
But I guess in large measure, if, if you had had a question about the porch or, or it, um, the, it, it is incumbent on the applicant, applicant to be aware of zoning and making sure what they're doing. And if it was a gray area, the question should have been posed to the building department at that time.
Yeah.
And certainly this is correct.
Yeah, well, I, I guess the applicant relied on a licensed surveyor who made a determination based on what I think is common practice, but, you know, other than that.
So now you're saying that the licensed surveyor gave you an opinion that this was not ground cover?
Yeah. I don't know if he gave his opinion, but he submitted, I mean, he's here.
The licensed surveyor's in the audience. We can ask him.
I'm not suggesting it's his fault, I'm suggesting that-
Why, it's sounding like-
No, but, but I agree with him.
Again, none of this matters.
Just wait one second. Paul, is that what happened? I can't see you because Steve's in my way. Steven.
He's coming slowly.
I'm assuming they're applying, preferring the ASBIL. I prepared an ASBIL in preparation of this meeting. It was not my determination of ground cover. It was an indication of what the two areas on each side of the overhang were, and so you would have a recognition of what it was.
Yeah, so you didn't tell them ahead of time this was...
No, I did not say that that is your ground cover. That's for the purposes of this meeting, so you knew what the two sides of that structure was.
Right, so you're making, yeah, I got it. So that was a slight stretch there, but anyway.
If you want to, frankly, I don't expect you to grant the variance because you would have, if you wanted to grant the relief, done it the other way. So we can wrap this up.
Move on. Okay. Somebody want to make a motion to...
Grant the relief as requested.
Right, which was a grant the variance.
Grant the variance as requested. All those in favor? Oh, sorry. I'm just trying to move it along. Okay, sorry. We need a second.
Are you making a motion?
I'm making a motion.
All right, Lisa made the motion. Who's seconding that?
That was long.
Somebody second. All right, Jim's seconding it. Any further discussion? No, all those in favor say aye. No, this is, I did that last time. So...
All those in favor say aye.
All those in favor say aye. All those...
Opposed?
Opposed, say aye. All right, that was unanimous. Sorry, Mike.
Sorry.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on.
Sorry, I didn't mean, I'm not trying to take over.
No worries. Ever hopeful. The power couple. Thirty-eight sixteen, Edmund M. Carpenter Jr. and Patricia F. Carpenter, Seventeenth Columbus Avenue, for the applicant.
I don't approve this. Why did we wait on this? I don't remember.
Well, is this the Carpenter case? I can hear you.
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is. I'm sorry.
We request that that be withdrawn without prejudice.
Oh, okay. I'm probably looking at an old...
The new agenda is actually next to that.
Yeah, I got it now. Sure.
Okay.
So... The sitting members were ET, MJO, LB, MP, JM. So Mark's gone. Susan's not here right now, so Jeff, you're in. Okay?
No, I'm not.
No, Jim? No, Jim was already in.
Oh, okay. All right. We're just withdrawing.
Just for the purposes of voting, they...
To withdraw, yeah.
Would like to withdraw without prejudice.
Could I ask again if it was...
Sure. Edward Tool, Michael O'Meara, Lisa Botticelli, Jim, and Jeff. Not yet.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Lisa makes a motion again, seconds it and votes. Lisa makes a motion. Would someone second that, please?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? No. So all those in favor of allowing the applicant to withdraw without prejudice, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, then these two are continued. Do we have to do anything on those in terms of timing?
I would request that I re-notice twenty-four sixteen. It was originally submitted, I believe, in August. It's been continued since that time. And they have, you know, notified me with ample time to let me know this. But I would like to re-notice three butters.
I think that's a great idea. I think that should be a...
I'd ask the applicant to know your time, but I just want to know if you can do that.
I mean, I think as a matter of policy, just talking about it, should we re-notice every two or three months if something is continued?
I think so.
Yeah.
That would be happy on the agenda to discuss that properly, but it hasn't certainly been on the agenda.
Put it on the agenda, please.
Probably makes sense.
Okay, so anything to do with thirty-six dash sixteen?
Just do continue.
Okay, so... So, right, so can we just get, can I just get a motion to approve the continuance of twenty-four sixteen to January twelfth, two thousand and seventeen? Lisa?
I'm not making any more motions.
Michael moved it. Who wants to second that?
I'll second it.
Lisa seconds. Okay. Any further discussion? No, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That was unanimous. Thirty-sixteen, Orin H. Crowell and Norma J. Goldman. Somebody make a motion, please, if you can. Continue to January twelfth, two thousand and seventeen. Is that your motion?
No.
No?
I'll make a motion.
All right, Susan makes the motion. Michael's not sitting on this one, so will somebody second that?
I'll second it.
Jeffrey seconded it. Well, any further discussion? No, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, why don't we just do that as well? I can't sit on forty-sixteen, Sanctity Head Golf, so Lisa.
Okay.
Will finally.
Get my ding. So we'll have four.
So we'll wait till Jim comes back.
Okay.
I don't think I'm going to be here next month.
I'm not here.
That does beg the question because it came up at the end of the meeting that, or somewhere, Eleanor, you noted that we already discussed January twelfth might be a problem.
Michael was going to come back whether or not he'd be here.
I'm going to be on the island, but, and I can make the end of the meeting, not the beginning.
Okay.
That helps.
You're not here.
I will not be here, period.
I'm not here, period.
Are you here? You're not here?
I'm not here.
Okay, so that's three.
Hold on.
That's the problem.
I'm trying to get to the...
Well, or do we want to look for a different date? Is yours specific to the twelfth? Yeah.
Yeah, I'm happy to do it. I mean, I think I get back on the twelfth or the thirteenth, so. We can do it on inauguration day. That would be fun.
Good. Get the TV going.
When is that?
Inauguration day? It's January twentieth.
So just from a procedural standpoint, Eleanor, if we're extending these things to... Continuing to January twelfth.
Well, in the case of the two new, the three new items, they've never been opened, so...
No, I'm not talking about those. I'm talking about the two we just did.
They've never been opened.
No, Sancti, oh, yeah, they were open.
There was an old...
No, they weren't open.
No, nothing's been opened.
No, it's been opened.
Yep.
Five members from the council, can you state that you have accomplished on at least one of them?
Well, definitely on Sanctity, so I wouldn't, but whether I'm not here or I'm here or not doesn't matter on that because I can't sit on it. Nor can Michael.
Four members, okay. You can pick a date certain and we can just hope that the room is available for a room to get, well, that's the issue.
Well, at a minimum, we would have to meet, some of us would have to meet January twelfth to move to the, at worst case.
Also, you can open it, close it, reopen it to a time when I can know that the room would be available or then re-continue it to a date certain.
And then you don't have to have it, is there any timeframe in terms of notification in advance of when you actually...
Well, once it's been noticed, forty hours in.
Okay.
All right.
Well, let's talk about the alternative date after the meeting, so we can get...
After the meeting?
Yeah. Everybody else out of here?
So moving on. Yep. Okay, so we are on thirty-nine sixteen, Twenty-three Commercial Wharf, J A L L C, Twenty-three Commercial Wharf, for the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No.
Before I open this matter, I represent the Sanctity Golf Club and would like five persons deciding the application instead of four. So whatever your respective schedules are, I'll accommodate to you, so we can do that. Hopefully sometime in early to mid-January.
Yep, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
I represent Twenty-three Commercial Wharf, J A L L C, and the principal of that entity is my client, Jim Aptecker. This is an application for a special permit to do a residential renovation project at Twenty-three Commercial Wharf. Right now, there's a very dilapidated, rundown existing cottage there. Just by way of background, there's a little bit of history to this matter. My client applied to the planning board a couple of years ago for a special permit to build a larger cottage and received that special permit, which was subsequently appealed by the abutter, Mr. Corey, to the land court. And the land court overturned that special permit. The matter is now on appeal, or was on appeal. I think the appeal's been withdrawn. But there has been some history here, and what my client would like to do, and what he's doing, is presenting a more modest, more reduced-size project to accommodate the concerns of the neighbors in the neighborhood. And specifically, what he wants to do is renovate the existing cottage and upgrade it and build a new cottage on the premises. The property is pre-existing and non-conforming. It's located in the residential commercial zoning district. It's non-conforming with respect to lot area. It has an area of fourteen and four square feet. And as you know, the minimum lot size in this district is 5,000. It's also, the cottage on the property is also sited 1.2 feet from the Westerly Lot Line and less than one feet, one foot, about 0.6 feet from the rear Lot Line. As you know, a minimum five-foot setback is required. Further, new residential uses are prohibited in this harbor overlay district, which only allows water-related uses. However, a cottage like this, a pre-existing residential cottage like this, is exempt from the harbor overlay restrictions and is allowed to increase its ground cover by no more than 100 square feet. So the existing ground cover is 359 square feet, 25.5 percent. And the property has 56 feet roughly of frontage on commercial wharf. The minimum's 40 feet. What my client wants to do is to renovate the cottage, add approximately 98 square feet of ground cover to the existing cottage, construct a second story, just like the cottage on either side of it, the Barney and Corey cottages have, and also provide one off-street parking space, a cobblestone parking space. The second story will be approximately 25 feet in height. As you know, it's subject to FEMA requirements for elevations down there. And required elevations, Mr. Bracken's here, we can speak to if you have questions about those. He's the expert. My clients obtained the historic district commission's certificate of appropriateness for the project. He's also obtained order of conditions from the conservation commission, both of which I've submitted to Eleanor for the file. Now, I know, I just want to note that I know my colleague at Brother Mr. Reed is here in opposition on behalf of Mr. Corey, the neighbor, at Twenty-one Commercial Wharf. We understand that. I just want to point out that both the Corey and Barney properties both have special permits for second-story cottages. The ground cover for both of those properties is in excess of 70 percent. This one is far less. So we're in keeping with the neighborhood. Mr. and Mrs. Barney wrote a letter yesterday to the board that were concerned about the floating dock on the Twenty-three Commercial Wharf property. They thought it might be unsafe, and it was subject to the vagaries of title action, would move around. As soon as we got that letter, I talked to my client. He said, listen, Kevin, I want to be a good neighbor. Write to the Barneys. Tell them we'll do what they want with the floating dock. We'll secure it. We'll make it right. So I've written a letter to the Barneys expressing that, and I'll submit that in just a moment to you. It's a modest project. If you go down to Twenty-three Commercial Wharf, you'll see that this old Stevie Walker cottage is in dire shape. It needs attention. And with Mickey Rowland designing the project, Don Bracken working on it, HTC approved it, it's certainly not only less detrimental to the neighborhood, it's substantially more beneficial to the neighborhood, especially with the provision for the off-street parking space. So I ask you to issue the special permit, allow the project to go forward, let Mr. Aptecker have his little cottage down there, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Okay, just a very minor point. I think in your presentation, you said the existing building was 359. I think it's 349. The math works to 447. But the other comment I would say about adding exactly ninety, assuming you get relief.
Yes.
Going to exactly the 98 feet might not be the most prudent plan, but that's up to you guys if you want to, if you get relief. So having said that, any questions from the board at this point?
Mr. Chairman, I take your point on trying to, as you said earlier, push the envelope on ground cover. So I know we'll talk to Mr. Rowland to make sure that everything is done properly and we stay under 100 square feet. This is the Barney letter and my response to you.
Did you say that ceiling was 25 feet? The issue's approval says 23 and change. It's lower? 23 and change, okay.
The proposed elevation, elevation, I think, docks 25, right?
We saw this. We got them by email. Thank you. I have a question about this harbor overlay district. Does this subsection or does this extra 100 square feet only relate to the harbor overlay district? Yeah, okay.
Specifically, it only relates to pre-existing residential structures in the harbor overlay district. It doesn't apply to commercial structures.
Okay.
And just by way of background, the prior special permit we submitted to the planning board was to build a transient commercial structure that would be larger, so it could go over the 100 square feet. That again is appealed and backed, so sticking with less than 100 square feet residential structure.
Okay, so I was just questioning the height of the building. It's...
Height of the building, we, on the plans, if you notice.
I'm trying to blow it up. I can't tell.
Unfortunately, we don't really have the plans. We have the site plan or the section.
Well, and there's an elevation.
Right.
But does that say 23 feet, five inches? Or 20...
23 feet.
Okay, that's fine. I just, I thought you had said 25 feet, and I just saw it on that, and I just wanted to make...
Yeah, 23.6, actually.
From the, from grade?
From the existing grade.
Okay.
I was looking at smaller for the plan.
So I know that one of, the letter, one of the letters in here questioned about whether the second floor being... I'm just curious. She said they were told that the, one of the reasons the house didn't sell was because there were, people were repeatedly told that the reason that they could not put a second floor on, so that's erroneous.
Yeah, we know nothing about that.
Okay, there's no deed restriction or...
I said both the bought properties have second stories and significant ones.
Do you have any...
So they were misinformed.
Yeah, they were misinformed, yeah. Do you have pictures of the wharf and the butters?
There's the Corey property.
So that's the one to the...
Could be the one to the east.
Oh, this side, okay.
This is the Barney property, which was renovated in 2008. Corey was renovated in Sanctity.
And this is that current house?
That's our, our client's.
Yes. Yes, for all.
These are photos, one of the Corey property at Twenty-one Commercial Wharf and the Barney property at Twenty-five.
Do you have any idea, I mean, not that it matters necessarily, is how high those structures are, what their ridge heights are? I mean, any, just curious if they're about the same height or...
It's like a newspaper, a bathtub, or whatever you call it. So this is the cottage? Or the cottage is over there?
This is the cottage.
Yeah. So where does the current cottage fit in here?
I think it might be on this side. I'm not inherent, this, so if you're looking at these, is this on this side of the cottage? Are these in order now?
Yes, this is the Barney house.
And then on the other side is this one?
I believe so, yeah. Right, exactly.
Okay, so this is that building?
Yes, that's right.
Just also for the proposed first floor elevation for our property, it's going to set the same as the one that's...
Which you probably have to do, right?
Well, we have to go to the State Building Commission to get a variance for the first floor elevation.
Oh, because you'll still be below, you'll still be below what's...
Still be below.
But to be above, you'll match what everybody else has.
Exactly. Another point of clarity is why the discrepancy in the building areas is set 359 application. From a zoning standpoint, we calculate 349 because we always make sure we have the foundation, the foundation of the chance. The reason why we got the table of areas of property, that was slightly different from that. That table was for conservation commission purposes, and that was... that, that table was for Conservation Commission purposes, and that was probably twenty-one Commercial Wharf.
Oh, got it.
Yeah.
Because they want to see different measurement.
That's why we have this discrepancy.
Okay.
So, we're, we're looking for the zoning application right now.
Well, but I think that's an important distinction. I mean, the, and I know, I know it's a moving target, but right now, it's the foundation.
That's, well, that's what we have always been told, and that's what we have always...
So, can you overhang the building by two feet around the entire?
No.
So, if you went to measure a building, and it, it cannoli or two feet around the foundation?
You can't do that at grade level, though. That puts a big window on you, man.
I know that. So, I'm asking, would you then default to the corner boards?
Uh, yes, if it's living space.
I got you, of course, yeah. Yeah, 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 got you. Okay. I got you. Do we care about not seeing or the fact that the HTC plans were not submitted to the...
Well, there's an HTC approval here.
What, with no plan?
No.
I think I have plans.
No plan.
I can sort of get you the plans.
But, um...
I have to set a plan.
That's fine. You can just hold them up back there, it's fine.
One more thing that I left out. My client's happy to accept the condition to refrain from exterior construction from May to September. That's something the board would want, want to consider.
Okay, do we have enough information at this point to hear from other people?
Yep.
Any other questions? No, okay. Thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Attorney Arthur Reed representing Richard Corey, trustee of the adjacent property. We are in opposition to this application. Bear in mind that this property is within the harbor overlay district, so all the rules that have applied with regard to previous construction in the surrounding area have been changed and affected by that. This is a new structure. My understanding is that there may be some portions, some components of the existing structure that will be incorporated into the new structure, but it is a new structure and a new location on the lot, and as such, it is subject to the provisions of the harbor overlay district that severely restrict and discourage new residential construction within the harbor overlay district. And those specific points are, first, that no new residential structure shall have residential use on the first floor. Only above another use on the first floor is residential use permitted. In other words, the bylaw allows for commercial use on the first floor, but residential use must all be above the first floor. Secondly, no structure is permitted within twenty-five feet of high water, and obviously, that would not be met with regard to this application. Therefore, both of these factors, none of which allow for any modification by special permit, would have to be overwritten by variance, which I don't believe there's a request in the application and which we would oppose on the basis that we don't believe that variance criteria are met. Therefore, we would ask that you deny this application in full. Thank you.
Thank you. At least has a question.
Do you have a, a set of, to Arthur's point of demolition drawings? I mean, when you look at the existing to the proposed, I can certainly see that part of the building shares the existing roofline of the single story, but the amount of an addition that's being added and where it's being added, I'm just curious to know, you know, really, how much of this building is going to be left?
Well, I can say that the, um...
Sorry, Mickey, I know you, but...
Mickey Rowland for the applicant.
Thank you.
The, the eastern side of the building, which you'll see in the, on the, on the plans, that roofline which remains is one story. That's remaining. Everything front and back on that section will, will be existing.
On the east side?
The east side.
So, so the way that this shows, it shows sort of, I think, a rough dotted line that shows an extension and a, to the, to the east. Sorry.
I think the rough dotted line is only the section.
What is that line? So, that's not the new addition?
No, I don't think that's the new.
Something on the paper and it's standing.
Okay, so your intention is that this is existing and you're building new in that direction?
Yeah, this, this piece from here exists, well...
Well, so if you're building over the, you're building a second floor onto this, which means that roof is getting off and the floor is...
What's the existing use of the first floor? It's a single...
It's a cottage, no. This is, it's just a question of, is it a new building?
Right, yeah. Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
If I may, just to respond to Attorney Reed's current concerns, this is not a new building. This is renovation and extension of an existing building, and it's exempt from those requirements in the harbor overlay district, which say, as Mr. Reed pointed out, that it has to be commercial on the first floor, only residential on the second floor, residential only on the second floor, and twenty-five feet. I mean, a couple of things. It's a practical matter. Making no structures twenty-five feet from the water would mean you couldn't do anything there. It just doesn't work. It's, this overlay district is so difficult, but more importantly, this exemption from the overlay district for this kind of building, allowing a hundred square feet of ground cover, is specifically addressed in one thirty-nine, three G of the bylaw, one thirty-nine, twelve, three J. If I may read it, extended structures used for residential purposes are exempt, existing structures, I'm sorry, used for residential purposes are exempt from subsection F and may be altered or extended, provided that the existing ground cover of the structures, as of the date of the vote on this motion at town meeting, is not increased by a total of more than a hundred square feet. I think we fit right in there, and more importantly, we fit right into the commercial wharf neighborhood. Very similar, but smaller than Barney, smaller than Corey. This is a modest, very well-designed renovation of an existing cottage, and my client has bent over backwards to try to do everything right here, so I'd ask you to vote for the special permit.
The, Kevin, you cited subsection F?
I cited in your study report.
Well, I have, I, I have what...
One thirty-nine, twelve, I...
Oh, which reads, I see it. Yeah, so, but then, what is subsection...
Subsection G.
No, I see that, but then in, in the language, which reads, existing structures used for residential purposes are exempt from subsection F.
Subsection F, F, F is what Mr. Reed was referring to, which says that new structures shall contain the following water-dependent uses, et cetera. And that subsection F owner's requirement doesn't apply because we're exempt from it.
Okay, but it's the subsection F that refers to the twenty-five feet and the commercial use underneath the resident, okay.
And, Mr. Chairman, it's our contention that it is not exempt because it is not an extension of the existing structure. The structure is being moved to a new location, at which point it becomes a new structure.
I don't think that's ever been our interpretation. If you're moving to a new lot, maybe, but this is on the same lot, I don't think that that, I don't think we've taken that as, as a new structure.
Yeah, I, the, the issue doesn't come up in most circumstances, only in, in this harbor overlay district. Does the question of whether it's a new structure or not really come into play, and I think that bylaw is strictly interpreted.
I mean, I, again, I do think that at the end of the day, it'll probably be new. Pretty darn new.
But your intention is to pick the building up in its current stage, move it, put a new pile foundation, I assume, some, and then add the additions onto it. Um, yeah, I mean, so I don't, I don't see it, I was just trying to see if the changes were so dramatic that it was, that you couldn't even resemble the others, you couldn't see the other structure within it, then I think you could make that argument a little bit, but it's clear that part of it is the existing roofline. I do have to say, the, I'm not sure which side it is, let's see, I think it's the west side, that's that full two-story, it's, you know, I would not want to live next to that. I feel bad for those people. It's tight, it's very tall, very opposing, but...
But the people next to them already have the two stories.
Yeah, I know.
Just because they got there first doesn't make it...
No, I know that, I know that, but I can see that, I can see why they might have a reaction to it.
I'd point out that the, the renovated structure will share this, a significant portion of the same ground cover that the existing structure has too, along with, along with keeping the rooflines, as Mickey pointed out. So, again, I think that bolsters the argument that it's not new.
Mm-hmm.
It's an alteration, an extension of an existing structure.
It, it, it would have been helpful to have the plans as part of the application to see what was new and what was added. I mean, I, but...
Yeah, Arthur, I would agree to your point if the building was completely leveled and they came in with some plans, but this is just an addition as far as I'm concerned. I'm moving it, doesn't really change anything on my mind.
I mean, arguably, you're getting the building, although the porch, no, but the building face, if I'm reading this correctly, is moving about as far back as it can.
Right.
For commercial work, we're reducing the sideline setback on the rest.
You're improving it?
Yes.
Yes.
Reducing it, improving it, making it less...
Less nonconforming.
Less nonconforming, or making it more conformative.
You're getting closer to commercial wharf and adding a porch right to the point where, well, actually beyond, does the porch go all the way to the dock? Is there a porch off the south side?
There is a porch off the water side of the building that's existing. We're moving closer to commercial wharf because, as you know, there's no front yard setback requirement in the residential commercial district.
Where is the porch here?
Yeah, the porch and the, the proposed wood platform connect.
Right. There is no porch on that side on the existing house, correct? The existing house does not have a porch on the south.
There is a, there's a sort of negative mass.
Yeah, right, but, but you're adding an additive mass porch now.
Correct.
What is the negative mass?
It just cut out.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yep.
Okay.
And now they're adding another porch, yeah.
Okay, does anybody else want to talk about this one?
The negative mass, yeah.
Okay, uh, how does everyone feel? I mean, I guess it sort of boils down to whether or not we think it's a new structure. If it's not a new structure, therefore, the subsection F doesn't apply, and therefore, we're going to do it, we'll take the votes.
I don't, I don't think it's a new structure.
Yeah, make a motion unless there's somebody else in the audience.
No one else in the audience wanted to speak about this, I asked, so, uh, okay, so I, you know, again, I will say it one more time, the broken record, don't go to ninety-eight feet and come back because it's ninety-nine feet, please. Um, because, okay, so I said that. Now, are we, one of the neighbors did speak specifically about this floating dock. Is that in our purview?
Four by eight.
I don't believe it is. I don't believe that...
So, I don't see the issue of myself.
I don't believe you have jurisdiction of, of structures over the water.
I, I don't want them, the jurisdiction. I'm just asking because the neighbor did bring it up.
Just to be clear, we want to address that concern of the neighbor and make the neighbor happy about the floating dock, and we will do that.
Right, so you said you detached that securely.
I think it's safe to say that the latest version of the floating dock is five hundred times better than what existed.
Right. The, if nothing else, the posts are, are higher in anticipation of the...
Yeah, and the size of the, the, the members is a lot different.
Okay, but anyway, it's, it's not part of our gig. We're not approving it, we're not, we're not speaking about it. Okay. Okay, so, I think here you made a motion to grant the relief as requested.
And the only issues I have is, you know, is the dates.
Okay.
As long as we stated the dates.
So, the normal, no build in the summer dates, no exterior construction, no setting up you saw outside, no cutting brick.
So, what, what did you guys offer in this, May through September?
Offered Memorial Day through August, September.
Well, I, why don't we take that?
So, I thought we, I thought it was...
Well, they were offering that, so should we not take it?
Well, we definitely gotta take that. It would be whether or not we normally, it's longer.
No, I don't think so. Normally, it's Labor Day.
Labor Day.
Isn't it? Memorial to Labor Day?
I have to do June fifteen through September fifteen, sometimes Memorial Day and Labor Day.
So, if they, they want to, if they're okay with the end of September, I think.
We just think September's catching busy.
Yeah.
Yeah, agreed.
So, down on the wharf.
Great.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion's been made, seconded. Any further discussion? So, it's basically the five, uh, city full members that are voting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, yeah, I'm not gonna leave the room, but we need to continue, Sankey Head, so Michael and I are not sitting on it.
Okay.
So, you...
I'll make a motion to, oh, I can't, I can't, I'm the chairman, right? I can make the motion?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to continue four zero dash one six, Sankey Head Golf Club until January twelfth, twenty seventeen.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
This is Linda Nason, who's this?
Okay, um, Jeffrey, are you not sitting on this because you have a conflict?
Uh, no, I'm not sitting, I'm just, we have one minute.
All right, so we'll take a, a four-minute break.
That would be great. I could use a, a four-minute break. That would be great, I could use a, a four-minute break.
Should we do a sitter release, I think?
Yeah. I've got no sitter, 4:53. Tons of laundry to do. Are you looking for a job, Ed?
Oh, okay, I need to, I have to be on a, I have to be on a call.
Lisa has a call at 4:00.
4:00.
And I have a, I have to leave at 4:00. What, what did you say?
Was your mic on?
I hope so, you're going to get some complaints. Your wife's watching, you know.
Okay, anyway, let's get going, are we ready? Audience. Yo!
Oh, you know what?
Check, check.
Kevin's still here?
Who?
Kevin's.
All right, we're going to go. All right, please take your seats or go outside, not outside, but outside the room. Thank you. All righty.
Where the hell are we, anyway?
Mason.
Forty-two six, Mason?
Yeah, where is it? Forty-one dash sixteen, Linda Mason, applicant, and Angie Davis.
Okay, Michael's not sitting. Forty-one dash sixteen, Linda Mason, applicant, and Angie Davis and Paul A. Gates, owners. Twenty-three Monomoy Road, for the applicant.
Afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Rick Bodett for the applicant. Linda Mason, who, just as a point of clarification, has now purchased the properties, is the owner as well. I'm here this afternoon with Neil Adamiak from Woodmeister. The property we're discussing here is 23 Monomoy Road. The property's located in the lug, one zoning district, property is pre-existing non-conforming in a number of respects. As to lot size, with 12,695 square feet for lot area in a district that requires 40,000 square feet. Setbacks, front yard setback is 33 and a half feet, in a district requiring 35. Side setback is nine feet on the northern side, in a district requiring 10. As to ground cover, it is currently 1,810 square feet, and as most of you know, you're allowed 1,500 square feet for an undersized lot over 5,000 square feet, irrespective of the zoning district. That, the percent, the actual percentage of ground cover it is right now is 14.3% and 7% by the, by the lug one. We're seeking a special permit today pursuant to 13933A, which allows alteration and changes to structures that are over ground cover and allows for increases under certain circumstances of that ground cover. We're seeking to remove the existing house in its entirety and replace it with a new house while increasing the ground cover by 435 square feet. As I think you all know, you have certain criteria in the bylaw that allows you to grant special permit under these circumstances, first of which is the proposal can't be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, second of which is that proposal must be consistent with the character of the surrounding neighborhood's ground cover ratios, and number three, it has to be conforming in all other respects when it's rebuilt. As to number three, I'll start with that one, it'll conform to the setbacks, so it'll conform in all other respects with the exception of the ground, increasing ground cover that we're seeking. I would suggest to you that it is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, the proposal. I've taken a look at, I think, pretty much all of the surrounding neighbors' surveys that are on file, and just in describing the neighborhood, I would say it's a mix of a number of different kinds of properties. There are certainly, obviously, some pre-existing non-conforming lots with structures on them that, that have high ground cover ratios, some bigger and smaller houses, and obviously there are a number of conforming lots over the 40,000 square foot requirement with much bigger houses than what we're proposing, but nonetheless, that conform, obviously, to ground cover that were built after 1972 or one of the zoning changes. I think, given that a number of houses in the area, a 7% ground cover ratio on a 40,000 square foot lot is 2,800 square feet, so there are a number of homes that are 2,800 on oversized lots, there are some that are 3,600 square feet, 3,400 square feet, there are also a number of houses that are 1,500 square feet, so we're somewhere in the middle of that currently and where we want to be with this request, we're not, certainly not building the biggest house in Monomoy. With respect to that second criteria, whether the ground cover ratio of what's proposed is consistent with that of the surrounding neighborhood, again, same, same scenario, it's a mix of, like I said, it's a mix of different kinds of, of structures and ground cover ratios. There are a number of conforming ones right around it, 3 Brewster, it's 7%, it's 2,800 square feet, 11 Monomoy, 6.9%, 2,000 square feet, 13 Monomoy, 6.8%, that's 2,400 square feet, 27 Monomoy, 7%, that's 3,600 square feet. With respect to the pre-existing and undersized lots in the neighborhood, again, we're, we're right in that area as well, these are lots that are four, five, six houses down from, from this property in Monomoy. 32 Monomoy Road is at 23% ground cover. 34 Monomoy Road, this is probably the, the best comparison to our lot because it's the only one that's just about the same size, 19% ground cover, higher than what we're asking for, 2,371 square feet of ground cover. 34 Monomoy Road, 21% ground cover, 4 Sandwich Road, which is a little bit farther away, 12%, and 15 Monomoy down the street on the other side is 9.3%, again, we, we are at 14.3%. So there's a, a real mix of undersized lots with higher ground cover, oversized and conforming lots, with conforming ground cover but bigger houses. And so I would say we're consistent with, certainly, with that ground cover ratio, and we're somewhere in the middle of those, we're certainly consistent or in under some of those undersized lots. I might, I'll, I'll also add that, you know, some of those undersized lots that have the high ground cover, they conform to the exception in the ground cover ratio that they be 1,500 square feet, in other words, they're below that, unlike us, we're above that, so those particular properties could not come in and ask for an increase of ground cover, they technically conform. But with respect to that criteria where you guys all have to look at, is it consistent with the ground cover ratio, the ratios are high, obviously. So, and as I mentioned, it's going to conform with the setbacks, height, et cetera, zoning bylaws, so I'd ask that you approve the application. If you have any questions, you can as well.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
The Asbott has a roof peak of 40.5 on the drawings, what is, there's no roof peak on the proposed?
And that's, that's elevation.
Approximately 293.
Oh, you see it somewhere?
Yeah, it says it on the comments.
I don't see it, but that is right, it was 293.
The new ridge height is proposed to be approximately 293.
Okay, so it's 10 feet higher than the existing, well, actually, that's not true because I took that from the floor elevation, so it's probably nine feet higher. Has it been, has it been approved by the HGC?
No, it hasn't. We haven't, we haven't even applied yet. We're just in the process of applying for a demo or move off of the existing house. We did want to come here first just to get a sense from the board of...
You have approval for demo or removal?
Oh, we do. I thought you told me today. Sorry.
That's what it says.
Correction, we have approval for a demo, Lisa, but we haven't applied to the HGC for the proposed house.
Is that correct? Yeah, okay.
Well, that's what the staff memo says, the certificate of appropriateness, appropriateness 66951, 1115, 2016, demo or removal, which is interesting to me, but anyway, uh...
Why?
Just, never.
They don't hold it up for the new building anymore.
Uh, no, the whole demo idea, I mean, what you can and can't demo, we won't go there. So, anyway, any other questions at this point?
Do you have a list of the ratios that you were reading off to us?
Um, yeah, I can give you the one list I have.
I would have liked to have seen that as part of our packet.
Yeah.
And seeing it now.
Because obviously, the letter, the letter sort of says opposite, that it's unusually dense for the lot size, it's not right in the middle of the ground coverage.
Right, I mean...
There was a neighbor with, who opposed it.
Who wrote a letter.
Yes, I understand. Yeah, and I mean, I think, you know, I, I checked the, I think it was 17 Monomoy that he mentioned was 14%, that's actually, I have that one at 11%. I have all the surveys, I can submit to you.
Well, I personally would, would have liked to have seen them and, and prepared to continue this so that we can see it.
Okay.
Because I don't feel like the application is complete, because, I mean, you're hanging your hat on this and we have no evidence of it. I don't, I don't disbelieve...
Other than my good word, Mr. Chairman, you mean?
As I was going to go on, I don't disbelieve you, but I just like it in the file.
That's fine, fine with me, I mean...
And I'm not saying even with that...
Yeah, I know.
...you'll get relief, unless the rest of the board is adamantly against giving extra ground cover just because you're already over ground cover, which I personally think is insane, but...
Well, I know, it seems crazy, but, you know, I've certainly seen it done and have benefited from it, it just seems like an odd bylaw to me that you can be one square foot below and you can't ask for relief, but you're...
Yeah.
...three square feet over and you can, and then you can go to 17%, just doesn't make any sense to me.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds, it sounds like a direction to staff to ask for...
Well, it's going to be, you have to see.
There should be at least some stipulation.
For those under 1,500 square feet to also be able to increase. Is that what you're saying? No, I mean, look, it's, that's the bylaw, though, I mean, and I think, honestly, I mean, if you, if you think back, right, a few, few years, I was asking for this relief before it was in the bylaw, telling you, folks, this is supposed to be allowed under special permit, that's Massachusetts law, right? And I think town, the reason this is in the bylaw now is that Town Council talked to, I think Eleanor and Leslie, and said, that's the law, guys, so it should be in your bylaw properly, because remember, there was some question, is this a variance, is this a special permit?
And there's no way to get at least some sort of maximum ground coverage or maximum percentage you can go to, so they, these people could theoretically come and ask for relief to fill their whole lot?
Yeah, I mean, I think that could be changed, I think that, obviously, you know, would make sense, maybe, you know, a percentage or, you know, a straight amount.
Right, because they're going 25% over what they have in terms of coverage.
Yep.
They're at 1,810 and they're adding 435 square feet, which is just about 25%, you know, 24%, that's a lot of increase, not the 100 square feet or...
No, I agree, so Rick, this, this is, this came about not, this was not a local thing, this is a state thing.
That, you know, that, that's what I was arguing, arguing to you for years, I mean, Mr. Reed's gotten this relief from not this particular board, but, and, and a lot of us have in the past, years ago, by special permit, and there was one that came up, you might remember, it was on South Valley.
I remember, there were multiple structures on it.
Right, that was before this changed the bylaw. It was a request, I think I had to increase a couple hundred square feet, the board ended up denying it, and, but there was a big discussion, is it a special permit, is it, is it a variance? And I was arguing it was a special permit. And it was sometime after that, Leslie called me and said, hey, you know, you might be able to now actually apply for a special permit, and there won't be any question about it, and I've made an application since then under this provision of the bylaw, so, I think other people have.
But again, just to be clear, Leslie, it, it came out of state law stating that if you're over ground cover, you can continue to go over?
I mean, I think you should ask Leslie, maybe, but yeah, I mean, that's my position, and I think the, the fact is, Town Council, she got it from Town Council, I mean, she didn't invent this, and I didn't convince her otherwise, I think Town Council talked to her about it.
I just wanted to know if you were the perpetrator.
Yeah, right, I'd like to be, but I would, I'm not. I think she had a discussion with Town Council and he said, you know, this is something you should put in your bylaw because it's state law.
Yeah, I know the one time that I've seen relief happen for a client of ours, they were on a, a site that was, I'm blanking on the word, you know, losing, losing land.
Eroded.
Eroded, yeah. Decaying, eroding land, you know, so there was, that, I think that helped, and that was before you came in front of the board, but, I know, it's just an interesting, it doesn't seem right.
It makes no sense to me whatsoever.
And that's, you know, I, that's your opinion, but it's, it's in the bylaw, right? So I'm not going to not apply for it.
Well, I mean, it's nothing else that people that are below 5,000 square feet should be able to come and ask for relief, too. I agree, so...
Well, that's something we can, we can talk to the board. But I think at a minimum, on this particular application, just so we're looking at everything, we should have more information as to the consistency of with...
Maybe you should take like a GIS map and...
I was just going to say, how far do you want me to go? Because I, I mean, I could probably go farther than what I just listed, I grabbed a bunch.
Two-mile radius.
All of Nantucket.
No, I don't know.
Well, I mean, I think you should...
I mean, the neighborhood, where...
I mean, I could check, how about the whole of Butters list?
Well, I think what...
That's a, that's a good, that's a good list.
That's a good list.
I think at a minimum, yeah, I mean, there, it is a neighborhood, 300 feet's not very long, is all I'm getting at, it's like four lots down, yeah, if each one is 75 feet up front, and so, there is a pretty defined neighborhood out there.
And I'd be interested to see the percentage of coverage as well as the kind of, the size of the houses, the ground cover of the house.
Right, yeah, right, I mean, I, I have both, yeah.
So if you can listen to both.
I think it's got to be more than the Butters list, but...
All right, well, 10?
10 what, 10?
Well, I can do a radius from the web GIS, right? I mean, I can do 500 square feet, I can do 300 square, I mean, I don't want to, you know...
It's not 300, because, again, I, I'm, on, on another application that was continued, I'm not on the Butters list, but I'm certainly in the neighborhood, 300 feet just isn't very long, because the bylaw specifically states the surrounding neighborhood. I'm just saying, Monomoy is a pretty defined neighborhood, I mean, you can't, it, it's almost, it's got water on one side, it dead ends, so...
I know it is, I know Monomoy, thank you.
I mean, you should probably go from the, where the cable company is, because that's fairly close, right? That's when, yeah. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the zoning act defines neighborhood by the Butters, though, I mean, that's who, that's who has a presumed right to oppose.
It's not much of a neighborhood, but do what, do whatever you think is right, I mean, obviously the...
15 on the Butters list.
But you should go up to like 54.209, if he's not the, I mean, these guys were direct to Butters and then one beyond, what Ed's point is 54209 might not be on the Butters list, and that's a good one to be on there.
So why don't we say the Butters list plus whatever properties are shown on this, that little map he just did?
A representative sampling would be...
Oh, actually, that one is on the Butters list, 54209, okay.
All right.
So I think to Susan's point, what's on this map that you submitted as your GIS map and then the Butters list.
Probably a lot of the same, but it might be a couple properties that aren't.
Okay, so...
And if you could put it on some sort of a, on a chart, on a map like...
I'd like a PowerPoint, and like, the, the display, you know, just get...
No, but I was going to say a larger map that has the information on each lot, like a printed out GIS map.
All right.
Okay.
Wouldn't mine, you can handle it. Be a $4,000 map.
No, you can print it out on a photo.
I would like 3D printing with each little house.
That would be awesome.
Wouldn't that be cool, I mean, I'm surprised you guys don't have it in the office.
Remember the pizza lady presentation? The pizza lady presentation?
Did she have 3D printing?
No, she had like a, there was music, I think, maybe it's a violin. I'd like a PowerPoint and like the, the display, you know, just.
No, but I was going to say a larger map that has the information on each lot, like a printed out GIS map.
All right.
Okay.
Be a $4,000 map.
No, you can print it out on a photo.
I would like 3D printing with each little house. Wouldn't that be cool, I mean? I'm surprised you guys don't have it in the office.
Remember the pizza lady presentation?
Have you tried?
The pizza lady presentation?
Did she have 3D printing?
No, she had like a, there was music, I think, maybe it's a violin.
All right, anyway, some of us have to leave earlier, so.
I know, I'm sorry.
Can I get a motion to continue, I guess, to January? No, my bad. Please.
My name is David Berry. I am at a butter via Brewster Road. I own the properties at 11 and 15. And while I'm not as familiar with the procedure.
Can you just take a brief moment and show us on the map where you are?
11 and 15, sure.
Yeah, just pictorially here, so I know.
So, here's the, we want to make.
So, I own this, I own this triangle here.
Including this one and that one.
At current, it's two individual lots.
Got you. Okay, so you're close. Got you. So, right behind, basically, on Brewster Road.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
54, 261?
54, 224. 224 and then the one next to it, which we can't see.
But you can see the driveway next to it.
Yeah.
But you can see the line?
Okay.
The back line?
Okay.
Sorry, go ahead.
No, that's fine. I did submit a, a letter to be included in the file. I, I didn't contribute it until this Monday, which was after the due date. I don't know if you had an opportunity to.
We did, and that's why I referred to it about that.
Okay, okay, thank you very much. I, I, I wish that I had proofread it a little bit, a little bit more thoughtfully, but when I realized that I was late, I tried to get it in as early as I could and so to my, you know, with my regret, there's some spelling errors and what have you. I'm, I'm opposed to the granting of a special permit that's at issue, essentially on the grounds of ground cover. Right now, the property as sits is, I believe you know, 14.3 percent and their property owners are requesting 17.7 percent. It's almost a 3 percent increase in ground cover. And we are in a lug one, 7 percent ground cover zoning. Mr. Bodett suggested that there were circumstances with non-conforming lots of 1,500 square feet. You know, this is not something, this is not my specialty, I'm, I'm just a private citizen, so I'm trying to understand all this kind of on the fly. So, I hope you'll forgive me if, you know, I need a little bit of coaching or, or whatever in, in trying to make my thoughts clear. The property was purchased, I'm assuming with the understanding that the non-conforming circumstances would be a consideration in building. And while I, you know, somewhat admire the suggestion that by redesigning and moving the footprint of the building, that you address some setbacks, it troubles me that they're saying, well, hey, you know, we'll, we'll address these, you know, we'll address these non-conforming issues, but, oh, by the way, we want to, you know, go further out of compliance in, in the footprint. So, I don't really understand the comments that you guys have been having about, well, once you're out of the non-conforming compliance, then you can, you know, continue to kind of try to gain further out of compliance-ness. But regardless to that question that I'm trying to understand, I think that 17.7 percent is a large footprint for this lot. I will remind you that Monomoy is in the, what's it called? The, the country overlay district. And my understanding of the country overlay district includes a characterization by rural open spaces and protection of greenery. As a, you know, as a note to comment, I would say that I've always been impressed with this particular lot about the plantings and the trees that exist there. They're very, you know, they're very mature and quite beautiful. I personally will be sad to see those go. I would argue that as an abutter and a member of the neighborhood, that allowing excessive footprints does damage the neighborhood by not only removing the green elements, but by further encouraging a neighborhood that has very large homes to increase that desire of excessive footprint and even larger homes. So, that's essentially my, my position. I don't know the property owners. I, I hope that they'll, you know, that they're good, decent people. I'm under that assumption, of course. I have no personal, you know, relationship with them, so, you know, I can imagine that people might come in here with, you know, a personal grudge or something like that. That's not my position whatsoever. I'm, I'm just representing myself as a member of the neighborhood and a, and an abutter. So, if any of my points haven't been clear, please ask and I'll try to clarify.
No, they're clear. And just to your question as to why you can, if you're already, if you're non-conforming, why does that give you the right to continue to non-conform even more, if you will? There is a bylaw, whether you agree with it or not, and to, Rick is making the argument that it's based on a state law, so.
Yeah.
That's what we're sort of debating, if you will.
But since there's no percentage in it, I mean, we could, we could limit the increase.
Right, I, I.
Or we can just plain deny the increase. It's not a right, you have to come ask for a special permit. I mean, so, it's not a right.
Yeah.
That's why they're here.
Right, and I.
So, we, we haven't decided anything.
Sure, I appreciate you helping me understand better. You know, to be very candid, if the, if the application were going from like 14.3 percent to like 14.6 percent, you know, some, you know, some nominal adjustment, I probably wouldn't be present and wouldn't have taken the time to contribute a letter. In my, in my opinion, you know, 3 percent additional ground cover when you're already out of conformity seems substantial to me.
Well, it is substantial, it's 25 percent of what they have.
Right.
So, the 3 percent sounds sort of small, but the.
Yeah.
25 percent.
Exactly.
Sounds sort of big, so. I appreciate your comments and if we do continue this, I hope you can come back to the next meeting.
Thank you, I do as well.
So, I won't be here in January, so, but you'll still have five, right?
Yeah.
Well, I, I'm hoping that the January meeting is going to be.
Oh, because Mark, yes.
Rescheduled because I believe you sat on the thing that Kevin presented as well.
But we didn't vote, though.
No, no, but we're, we're running out of people. I think Jeffrey won't be here, et cetera, et cetera. So, we may look for a different date. But I think since we've already continued three to January 12th, we would do the same with the understanding that we may then.
Have a special move.
Just, you know.
Instead, okay.
I, I, since we look like we're going to continue it and, and it isn't a right to get it, but it may be in your best interest, you may speak to your client about the 3 percent number decreasing.
Right, the amount of ground cover?
Yeah, because it is significant.
It's 3.4 percent at the moment, I think.
Yeah, it's a, it's a significant increase and, and I tend to agree with the citizen who spoke that, I, I don't think I, you know, there is a bylaw, I don't think I would necessarily be against it in some capacity, but it is, it's a large increase.
Okay, thank you.
I also find it interesting, you don't have an HGC plan, but yet you've asked for a number. Is there a plan?
Yeah, there's a, there's a general design, but we don't have a.
We have this like proposed.
Right, and a footprint.
Yeah.
Just asking for a number, though.
Yeah.
But wouldn't we, we would normally prefer you to be through the HGC before we're making that kind of.
Right, I mean, I think eventually, we're going to be, you know, like a lot of applicate, we're going to be stuck in between two boards.
Right.
And we kind of thought, you know, we'll try to get the increase in ground cover, we can some, get some footprint that the board can maybe live with.
I get why you would want to come here first, because if you go through all of that and then you come in with a.
Right, it's, there's a lot of minutia in that and you might change it all completely.
Yeah.
Yeah, I get it.
Now, having said that, if, if you weren't increasing, you wouldn't have to be here. So, you could consider that.
I think we would have to be, I think you still need a special permit.
Even to not increase?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Why?
Because pre-existing.
Oh, because you're.
Because you're taking it away, you're putting it back.
Taking it away, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Well, let's.
I don't have any problem with that part of it.
Yeah, I mean, hey, just to be clear on the state law thing, too, I mean, you know,
we talked about changing the bylaw and this doesn't have anything to do with this application, but obviously, it could be changed, again, at town meeting to limit it. It could also be changed at town meeting to say, if you're over ground cover, you can never come in, you can be more restrictive than state law.
Right.
You can never come back in and ask for more. I think the issue previously was that there was nothing in the bylaw about it and that it's otherwise allowed.
Thank you.
Yeah, we can be.
Yeah, we need to do something about that.
Yep.
So, but having said that.
Do you want to continue?
Yeah, was there anybody else, so I don't, oh.
Move, move.
Yeah.
We're off here, Mark, today.
I'll just be quick.
No, you can take as long as you want.
I'm being called at the Nantucket Land Bank. And being in a butter, we own the property to the south and west, number 21. It's a preserved space, it was gifted.
21.
To the land bank in 1989.
Is that the, that's not the point?
The triangular lot.
That's a triangle, okay.
Okay.
And it's, you know, preserved in perpetuity.
The little triangle, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The one that's right next door.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, not the bigger one, that's, okay.
And, you know, as an abutter, and these things come across our desk a lot with potential encroachments, it's clear, on, on the proposed plan, the existing conditions plan, the edge of clearing already shows significant encroachment onto the land bank property. The proximity of the driveway is very close to the property line. Really only here today to suggest an ounce of prevention. It went and if a project of this size were to go through on such a small lot, that perhaps the owner could be persuaded to take, you know, steps to, to maintain proper boundaries, whether it be with construction fencing or other like prevention surveying, what have you. We deal with this all the time, inadvertent and, and obvious, you know, encroachments. So, in this case, we just, you know, see, see what could be on the horizon and just thought that we should come down and say, say something to that effect.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there anybody else that I've missed? No. So, are we in agreement to continue to January 12th, 2017, for now?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay, so will somebody make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
All right, Lisa makes the motion.
Second.
Kieran's second, any further discussion? No, all those in favor, say hi.
Hi.
January 12th.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, can I peel off?
Seriously? I mean, we've got all the, the station staff and. Station staff, we have a board.
Okay. I know, I just was thinking, before we start another one, but.
So, the, okay, so, 4216 Nancy Colson, nine Halliwell, Halliwell Lane, for the applicant. It's Reed.
Attorney Arthur Reed for the applicant. This is a situation also where we are proposing to demolish and reconstruct a structure that is slightly, in this case, in excess of the ground cover requirement, but we're not proposing to increase the ground cover. And we are actually going to eliminate one very small dimensional non-conformity in front yard setback. Right now, the structure is, is setback from the road, from nine Halli, from Halliwell Lane by 29.7 feet. And 30 feet is what's required. We're going to be able to push the reconstructed structure back so that it will, in fact, meet the 30-foot front yard setback requirement. Otherwise, the footprint of the, and the ground cover of the structure will remain exactly the same. We have HGC approval for the work that is to be done. The history of this lot is that it's a waterfront property and as such, the lot area has fluctuated, not, not always purely erosion, there's been some accretion from time to time, but in general, it's been on an erosion direction and, but not by very much. However, what was originally conforming when it was built became non-conforming as a result of the erosion. We've been before the board in the past for other projects on this property, most recently, the demolition and reconstruction of the secondary dwelling, which was increased at that time by 60 square feet in ground cover. In any event, this project does not involve any increase, but it does involve demolition and reconstruction of the primary dwelling on the site.
And if I read this correctly, you're actually, and you probably said this, you're actually, you're sticking to the 3860 square feet of ground cover.
Yes, ground cover remains exactly the same as it now is.
And bringing it into conformity or more conformity.
Into conformity as to setbacks and ground cover remaining the same as has already been approved.
And the house, Arthur, is really going to be identical, pretty much, to what this?
Yeah, yeah. There are going to be some changes in the house, but not in, not in the footprint and that's been already approved by the HGC.
Okay, does anybody in the audience want to talk about this?
No.
What do we think? It seems almost too simple to be true.
We, 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 that's about my level these days, Mr. Col.
Will we have Mr. Reed take the lie detector test?
No, I'm not suggesting that, but I just, no, it seems, seems okay to me.
So, good name, yeah.
Yeah, so, if there's no further ado, let's, let's vote. So, you're good? Take him up.
Make that motion, we can review the application.
Okay, so, motion's been made, the grant of relief is requested. Is there a second?
One second.
Susan's seconds. Any further discussion? No, all those in favor, say hi. Hi, thank you.
Hi.
I was just about to ask, who are my five?
Jim can sit.
Jim's sitting. Jeffrey did.
Okay.
Jim is activated?
Jim was activated, yes. I like that term.
Me, too.
All right, we do have some.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Some time concerns, so we're going to try to blow through the next. Okay.
I would ask the little closer.
Well, whoever goes out there, will you ask Lisa to come back in, please?
Well, because, I mean, eventually, it's going to grow.
No, no, I was looking, I thought we had a bunch more stuff that I.
Off the cliff.
Yeah.
Down, way down.
Oh, okay.
Right, it's down.
Before it. Okay, so, Lisa's sitting. 51.
That went too fast, I was trying to, I think I might have been late.
And I appreciate that, because you probably will be a little later than four if you can.
I am trying to send this.
Your hair looks beautiful anyway.
What does that mean?
I thought it was a hair problem.
No, it's not.
I'm kidding.
You're just...all these comments today.
Is that a sexist comment?
No!
It is, about a hair form into a woman.
Good lord!
I need some need.
You just ate.
I did.
I'm going to tell your wife about that one.
All right, are you ready?
Well, no, I'm still trying to type, because you're making...
Okay, we're gonna say...
Okay, you can start.
No, that's...
I'm just going to say we push the call to four-thirty.
That's perfect, thank you, I appreciate it.
Anything for you, Chairman?
Yeah. Power couple. You ready?
Okay.
Fifty-one oh three Rugged Scott LLC, Rugged Scott, AKA Beach Plum Forty-B, for the applicant.
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Chris Humphrey for the applicant, Rugged Scott. The applicant seeking a modification of the comprehensive permit issued for the Rugged Scott Forty-B subdivision pursuant to seven sixty CMR fifty-six point zero five. The modifications would allow insubstantial architectural changes to lots two and three in the subdivision. Those changes would not result in any significant architectural detail changes or existing design changes. There's also a request for a color scheme change for Lot Two, from the approved colors to a platinum gray with black windows. Thirdly, we're seeking the replacement of the existing pool and community common area. It's an expansion of that area that's going to be a real benefit for the development. And finally, the applicant seeking the exchange of a pre-approved model home for one of...a different model resulting in a very insignificant increase in floor area. We've submitted the plans in support of this application. I know you've had an opportunity to review those. I'm happy to address any questions regarding those changes. Also with me is Rugged Scott's principal, Josh Posner, and he's also happy to address any questions and also fill in on any background. This has...this was approved back in 2006, and it is progressing, but there's a lot of background for sure.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I would... Everybody look at the plans? They're...they're very...the things that are noted on certain pages, these are the changes, it's not...they're not circled per se. Just window relocation, a door relocation, an outdoor shower added, trash enclosure added or relocated. Are those the changes you're referring to?
Yes, I am, and there was also an elimination of a sunken patio that had previously been approved to come off the basement that's been eliminated.
Okay, yeah, oh, uh, right, okay. Do you have a question?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Do you plan on going to the HDC for these changes?
No.
Because we are them, right?
For the purposes of this, you have jurisdiction.
I didn't sit on this.
I didn't either.
I didn't either.
In 2006. But I know sometimes Forty-B's agree to go to the HDC in the beginning and for every change made, so...
Yes, and in this instance, you do have jurisdiction.
Okay, thank you.
And we came back at the request of Eleanor for some...to clarify some of these minor changes.
One more question, is the color, you're looking for an approved color by the town?
It is not an approved color by the town, but it is a very subtle change from the approved colors. I think it may even be on the Spatelli's office.
Office, it is.
And there's also...
Black?
We did a project of Fox North Liberty.
Hey, did you get that approved?
Yeah.
So even though it's not an approved color?
Yeah.
Black.
You can get whatever color you want approved.
Okay.
Yeah, and the gray is not...is not an approved color, it's a slightly lighter gray.
And it is quite subtle.
But the gray... Go ahead, sorry.
It adds to the diversity of the neighborhood, we believe it's an improvement.
The gray and black has been approved by the HDC in the past.
Yeah, the market now...well, the market might be cobblestoning. No, the new market is gray and black, too.
It's platinum gray and black. Yeah, I don't mind, I like it, but I'm just curious. Okay, so taking the items separately, the architectural changes to the minor architectural changes to the buildings?
It's fine with me.
I don't have any issues.
I don't have any issues.
Anybody have any issue?
No.
Is anybody in the audience here to speak to this one? Is anybody? No. Okay, how about the color change?
No problem.
No problem.
No...no problem. More architectural changes, more architectural changes, minor. The pool and community area, I have to say, I haven't been there in a long time. Is the existing...is there a pool in there now?
Yes, there is, and it's...that was previously approved by this board to relocate to its existing position. We're going to keep that location and then just improve the area that was previously approved to have some...an area where children can play, bocce court, overall enhancement to the subdivision. And that is before the HDC, they're going to decide on Tuesday regarding those proposed changes.
All right, but for instance, the gazebo, that's not for us, that's the HDC, if you will. Don't we sort of need the HDC approval before we can say these changes are okay? What if they say no?
This is what's existing now, I'm looking for the...
Go ahead.
They say...
Once the gazebo is completed, it is now within the purview of the HDC. I think they were just trying to let you know all of the different changes that are taking place in terms of architecture and construction.
Okay.
Technically, we...it would probably be built into the decision noted as such, because it's kind of a site plan review.
But we're not speaking specifically to the...I mean...
You do not have to approve that, because that's under the HDC's purview. And you...the thing is, you approved the relocation of it and the downsizing of it back in 2008, this board, their board view that sat on it.
Right.
They just want to make it better and nicer, and the HDC will be in charge of approving that.
I certainly have no objection to better and nicer, but again, I don't...we're not really talking about that right now. So we're not...
You're just approving a relocation, right?
No, the relocation was approved in '08, right?
Yes, to where it is now.
I mean, sorry, the same, sorry, it's staying in the same location.
Yeah. So this was...I don't think you need to be here for that one.
We don't...certainly if the HDC has jurisdiction, which we believe it does, we're being overly cautious by...
Yeah, I appreciate that, but... If you had the HDC certificate with you and just wanted to attach it to everything, I think that makes some sense, but since you're already...you're there also? Does that make sense to you?
We're happy to withdraw that portion of the application.
Okay, so then we're down to the minor...minor...minor changes to the architecture and the color change.
So, we should just make a motion to approve this?
Oh, and the...
And the model home.
The model home issue. Just help me out, you're changing the location of the model home?
No, sir. Previously, this board, when it approved the overall site plan, had approved certain models for various lots. In this case, a Model M1 was approved for Lot 26. And in this case, the applicant would like to put a Model M5 home on that lot. It's substantially the same, it results in a small increase with a sunroom, so it's an overall increase of approximately seventy-two square feet. And Mr. Posner could speak more to that if the board has questions. But it's keeping within the characteristics of the neighborhood. That model was previously approved by this board. We're just asking to substitute it on that lot.
I don't have a problem with that.
I think we've done that before.
Yeah.
And that's correct.
Is it the...so the same number of bedrooms?
Yes.
Okay.
Does anybody have any issue with that? No? And I don't think it matters, the affordable units are getting built. Eleanor, everything's going swimming lake. And making this one bigger doesn't really change anything. So, all right, all right. I'm good with it. So, would...
So I'll make a motion to approve the relief requested, and we're not addressing the pool.
Okay.
Could you say that again?
A motion to approve the relief as requested without the...
The pool question.
Without the pool question, leaving that to the HDC.
Yeah, we're just not commenting on that.
Yeah.
All right, so that was the motion, is there a second?
One second.
Lisa seconds it. So it's the five full men...no, yeah, one, two, three, four, five, yeah, voting on this. So all of them in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Let's try this. Susan, if you have an issue at four, and you need to be home at four, this is going to take more than ten minutes to resolve. So, it is...
I know, I know, but we want to have the discussion about the bylaws.
I do, but if you can't, you can't. We'll try, it's up to you.
I only...I live like two minutes away, so it's fine.
Okay, all righty, where were we? Seventy-six eleven, Satcham's Path, Nantucket LLC, Satcham's Path Forty-B, for the applicant.
Can we get a new page with that stuff?
We did.
Is this it? Is it?
Hold on one second.
Oh, here, this must be it.
No, that's...that's Rugged Scott.
Okay, I must just be out of order, what page is it?
What page is it?
Yeah.
Well, it starts on page two seventy-five.
Okay, so there's the stuff that got emailed, is that...was that printed out then?
Uh, yeah, you can read that.
Would you like to use that page and all the things that were included?
That's a summary.
That's what...that's what I got in the email, yeah.
Go ahead, Andrew, sorry, please.
Sorry about that.
No problem, go.
Good afternoon, for the record, my name is Andrew Singer, an attorney here on behalf of the applicant. With me is Sandy Horvitz from Housing Assistance Corporation. Kevin McGuire was going to come, he was called away on a family emergency, so he asked if I would come. It's been some time since I've been before you on this project. As far as the documents were submitted for this minor amendment request, I'd submitted the original request on November fourteenth with a draft second amended and restated document earlier this week, and I think Lisa was referring to it, we'd emailed some additional papers. It was a one-page handout and then a three-page. I do have extra copies, the one-page handout's what I'm going to be mostly referring to. If any of you don't have it with you, I have extra copies here for you. It's the one that was landscape portrait on the page. The...as you know, Phase One has been successfully completed. There are fifteen families in the development, and the Habitat House is going to be moved on to the site later this month. And now we are here as the final step for trying to get Phase Two underway. The building permit applications are ready to go and to be submitted, and the lottery is scheduled for next Thursday at this point. There are sixty-six families who are in the lottery for the twenty-two homes that are part of the applicant's proposal. And then there were the other two for Habitat, which I'll discuss. The reason why we're here seeking this amendment, there are four parts to it. The first part, I'll start off, is the easiest. Back in March of this year, you approved a minor amendment. A historic committee had asked for a change in some of the driveway aprons and materials. You approved it, it just never made it into one of the written documents. So I included it in the Second Amendment, so it would just be written. That's just a housekeeping matter for something that you approved in March. The other...one of the other requests is to change the numbers of units that are going to be done by the applicant versus Habitat. There's no change here. None of the changes I'm requesting, or we're talking about today, disturb or change the development itself. Not...the design is not changing, the buildings are not changing, none of that is changing. What is changing on this part of the request is that originally, you'll recall, Hack and now Satcham's Path Development LLC were going to do thirty-six of the homes, and Habitat was going to be doing four of the homes. You had a question at the beginning, you wanted to ensure that all of the eighty percent houses would be constructed. At that point in time, Habitat was going to be doing two of those. So there is a condition in F-two that talks about when building permits can be issued as between the Habitat homes and the applicant homes, because you wanted to ensure that all ten of the eighty percent homes were built. As part of the renegotiation between the applicant and Habitat, they actually changed that percent of the numbers. So now, the applicant is doing thirty-seven of the homes, and Habitat is doing three of the homes, one in Phase One, as I mentioned, and two in Phase Two. However, what's most important for your consideration on this is that the applicant is taking over the responsibility for all ten of the eighty percent homes. And so, the three Habitat homes are going to be, you know, affordable homes, but they're not going to be part of the eighty percent. This is an entirely affordable development, there are no market rate units in this, and the applicant will be doing all ten of now of the eighty percent homes. And the ones that haven't been built in Phase One will be built as part of the twenty-two homes in Phase Two. So we're asking for an amendment to condition F-two to delete the sentence that I put in the draft, which just talked about when building permits could be issued as between Habitat and the applicant. The reason you imposed it no longer exists, since the applicant will be covering all of those eighty percent homes. The final two requests that we have before you are actually going to be, I'm sure, the most discussed, because they both deal with money. And the reason those two are on here is specifically because, and this is in... none of this is new, but for the record, it's in the one-page handout that I gave you. Given the...Phase One went very well, however, given some of the operational order of the construction, and given the costs, as you very well know, out on the island, for Phase Two, the applicant is unfortunately facing a deficit budget gap of eight-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand dollars. And so what they have done prior to coming to you tonight is say, okay, how are we going to, you know, have all the money so that we can begin Phase Two, do the lottery, and get these other twenty-two families in there? So, the reason why we're here this evening, in October, the state issued the final two awards of state funding for the project. Totals about a million and a half dollars. As you know, reading the paper, the state environment's very challenging at the moment, but this money was secured, the money was issued. That came in October. We then applied to you in mid-November, and we're here before you tonight. So, the question was, how do we deal...we have the state funding, how do we deal with this eight-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand dollar gap? This is a twenty-two million dollar project. And so now we're chipping away, how do we get down to zero, where you have all of the money? The applicant went to the CPC and asked them if they would consider an additional grant in the neighborhood of five-hundred thousand or so of the eight-twenty-three. The CPC very generously awarded three-hundred thousand dollars towards this budget gap, and there is a representative from the CPC in the room, or he was, and you have a letter from them as well. They felt, however, that they wanted the applicant to also be contributing towards the gap. And they also felt that they didn't feel it was appropriate that CPC funds that are raised, you know, from the community, be spent on fees that the applicant would be paying to the community. So they asked that we come and we seek a waiver for those. And I'll go into why we're asking for the waiver, and how it is structured, and how you're the body that is reviewing that. So of the eight-twenty-three, take three hundred off, you're now at five-twenty-three. The applicant has agreed to pay three hundred and twenty-nine thousand four hundred. So they are taking sixty percent of their developer's fee that they were going to have earned for Phase Two, and they're contributing it towards the gap. And that leaves, if you do the math, a hundred and ninety-three thousand six hundred dollars. So a little less than one percent of the twenty-two million dollar project for Phase One and Two is the gap we're facing right now, a hundred and ninety-three thousand six hundred. That fee, or that amount, and it's in the amendment document that I gave you, is...are the fees that would be due for the sewer connection fee, the water connection fee, and Building Department fees. The sewer privilege fee is not being requested to be waived. In Phase One, the applicant had no waivers from fees, as I know you recall. And the applicant paid at that point two-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars to the town for the sewer connection fee, the sewer privilege fee, the water connection fee, and the Building Department fees. They were able to do that in Phase One, and then...so that was paid. And now for this phase, as I mentioned, they are not asking for the waiver on the sewer privilege fee, which they will be able to make work, but those other fees are something that they can't make work. And in order to continue with Phase Two, to get these building permit applications in, they are here before you, at the suggestion of the CPC and in talking with others in town, to request that this board grant a waiver from those fees in the decision. I should also note one other...part of the...one of the other conditions we've asked to waive, which is condition F-seven, and this gets to money as well. If you recall, in Phase One, condition F-seven is the one that required that the infrastructure for Phase One be constructed before the buildings were constructed. And so all the roads and drainage, everything went in before you could start building one house. It worked, the applicant obviously was able to build the houses. However, it led to significant interruptions to the operational efficiencies and increased money. If they have to do the same thing in Phase Two, it's going to cost an approximately an extra sixty thousand dollars to stagger the construction again, to have Phase Two infrastructure done, and then the buildings. So in addition to the waiver request, we're asking if you would amend condition F-seven to remove the sentence, and again, it's in the draft that I gave you, requiring the infrastructure be constructed first, and the dwellings thereafter. They would like to, using the same contractor, the same people onsite at the same time, separated from Phase One, you know, with fencing and everything that they're doing, construction fencing, they would like you to remove that sentence so that they can do both of those at the same time. same time. The change to Condition F-seven is a condition, just like the change I mentioned to F-two. Those are just conditions that you imposed, that you are reviewing, and you'll either agree or not agree to make the change. As for the waivers, um, and want to go into this a little bit, because this is something that you don't always grant, it is something that, in looking at the rugged Scott decision for the project right before, there was some discussion of some exceptions in there for sewer fees, because the new sewer was then coming in. Under, as you know, under Chapter Forty-B, you, the Board of Appeals, sit in the shoes of all local boards, and if there's a local board, a local policy, a local rule that needs to be provided, it comes to you, and other boards give you input. Under the Forty-B regulations, at seven-sixty CMR fifty-six, you have Section Eight C-four, the Board of Appeals has full authority to waive fees otherwise assessed by local boards. The Board of Selectment, as you know, as of July of this year, have a policy on waiving at least sewer connection and sewer privilege fees in certain instances. That's a local board, and in fact, it's been used. Habitat went through that process, since they're not one of the applicants, you know, covered by the Forty-B, as we've gone over in the past, they actually went to the departments, they went through that policy, and their sewer connection fees, sewer privilege fee, and water fees were waived for Phase One. So, there is a precedent on the Satcham's Path Development for a waiver of fees. The Selectmen did it for, for Habitat, and I'm assuming Habitat may ask for the same for Phase Two. We're here asking you that, but we're here before you. And the reason we're here before you, again, is as I mentioned, you stand in the shoes of all local boards, so all such decisions are in your hands. And state law, as I mentioned, in seven-sixty CMR fifty-six accounts for that, it provides that you are the ones looking at that. So, we are here asking you for those four changes. Uh, they, again, they do not impact any of the development itself, uh, it's just the numbers, the allocation, the timing of construction, and the waiver of those fees, the final one percent of this twenty-two-million dollars, so that we can get those applications out, have the lottery next week, and get these other twenty-two families in. Uh, if you have any questions, I do know there's, are people here, not only from CPC, but also Housing Authority and a local lender. Uh, we have been talking to people at length about this, and we hope that you will vote for it, and we appreciate your time. If you have any questions, we'll be happy to discuss them with you.
Okay, thank you. Um, first and foremost, what we're here to determine is whether or not the requested changes are insubstantial or substantial. If they're substantial, well, depending on, if they're substantial, there are other steps we have to take, in terms of re-noticing to the neighborhood, or, you know, in the paper, et cetera, et cetera. So, that's, that's step number one. Um, because if, if they're deemed substantial, we don't discuss it at this point per se.
Does anyone think that they're substantial?
I do.
Yeah, I do too.
I, not all, not all four.
Right.
No.
What's the total amount, um, including, um, I see the three listed here. Excuse me for one second. Did I think it add up to A, B, C, C being building permit fee? I think that adds up to a hundred-and-ninety-three-thousand-six-hundred?
That is correct.
And what was the other one, six?
Oh, approximately, if, if construction has to be staggered in the sequencing, approximately sixty thousand dollars.
Again, the reason I think it's substantial, Susan, on the, on the money issue is, again, it's not that I disbelieve anybody, but I think that, you know, we really need to see numbers drilled down.
I agree, yeah.
I'd also would want input, if we are acting as the Board of Selectmen, I'd want input from the Board of Selectmen. Andrew Singer specifically mentioned getting input from other boards.
It's, I mean, it's a, it's a significant amount of money.
It is.
Well, it's just, yeah, and we never have done it that I remember, but...
Yeah.
He sent it to the Selectmen, I've got my notes.
Yeah.
So, I, Mr. Chairman, I, I appreciate what you're saying, but this is not, and there are others in the audience, when you take public comment, who may be able, who will address this, I hope, and, and can, and maybe help assuage any concerns you have. We're not asking to, you know, change the, the overall pro formas, we're not changing the numbers, and, and the applicant's proposing significant money into this. If, if you determine that it's substantial, and we respectfully disagree, I don't believe it is, this is handling the conditions for that, we're obviously in, we, we have a very difficult situation practically. And that is, that, two things. One, obviously, if you determine that it's substantial, you won't vote tonight, and it'll, either we, we have to come back, you continue it, whatever. That would obviously be after the end of the, the new year. As of January first, there's a new state building code version coming into effect, and that is going to itself increase costs to build these houses by approximately another hundred thousand dollars. The more this gets delayed, the more the applicant has an inability to start Phase Two and to successfully bring it to conclusion. That's why I mentioned, the lottery's scheduled for next week, the building permit applications are ready to go. If you find the decision substantial as we believe it is and vote it tonight, that can all get going. If you can't, do not, in your discretion, make that vote, then everything gets put off. The lottery has to be canceled, the building permits can't go in, and then you have an even bigger problem, because the building code changes as of January first are gonna cause even more increase. So...
Why didn't you apply before December, uh, before now?
Well, as I meant, I tried to mention that when I first was speaking. We didn't get the final approval from the state until October. I submitted a letter, uh, in the early, mid-November, as we were discussing with Eleanor, this was the next available meeting. So, we were here just as fast as we could possibly get here. And again, when you look at substantial versus insubstantial, this is, we're talking about less than one percent of a twenty-two-million-dollar project, and so we would respectfully submit that it is insubstantial in this instance.
What has the Board, have they waived these fees in the past?
Not that I know of, other than, again, I don't, I don't...
The only thing that's different, uh, really different here is, this is a hundred percent affordable.
Ken Bogren, any response to your comment?
Hold on one second, we were having a discussion.
I'm sorry.
I'll get to you, thank you.
So, so there, there was another one, um, the name of it, uh, helped me.
Abrams Bar.
Beach, uh, um, sorry.
Which, um...
Right.
We did not contribute to...
Didn't the people end up having to pay directly, the, the home?
Yes.
Well, that was the big problem, they came back, there was a problem, it came back later. And I believe, I don't remember the details quite frankly, but, uh, you know, again, I, I, I think it's substantial, I understand it's one percent, um, but I think it's a substantial change in terms of what we have in the past done, in terms of waiving or not waiving fees, um, if there were. So, that's just me though.
Well, that's a different, that's a different, that, that their, their request might be ins, not insubstantial, but for us, it's substantial because we haven't done it before? Like, I don't think that, does that...
Well, it's not because we haven't done it, it's just that, yeah, we, it's substantial to me only because it's, it's relatively new territory for us. I think it should be discussed at greater length. I think we should have numbers in front of us, um, from Phase One that show...
Where are the eight-twenty-three?
This is where we are, and we really are nine-hundred and power, eight-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand dollars into the negative, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and how that's working to come in here, you know, and it seems substantial to me. Um, and the infrastructure issue, to me, was, we were pretty adamant, and I'm not, you know, I haven't made a decision, obviously, but we were adamant from a health and safety standpoint, and the fact that it was a hundred percent, that the land was given, CPC donated a huge amount of money on a percentage basis, that that infrastructure could put in ahead of time, just to make sure the project wasn't half-finished with no infrastructure.
And people living there.
And I, and, so to me, that's a substantial change. I'm not saying we wouldn't agree to it, because there might be some real compelling reason, but all we're talking about right now is, is it substantial or insubstantial? Because if, if everybody feels that it's insubstantial, we'll talk about all these things at greater length. If they're substantial, we have to notice people and...
I think this part of it's substantial, as far as colors and all that other stuff.
Yes, in the Habitat house.
This part?
Change.
Yeah, I think, I don't have a problem with number one.
Need to waive those fees with no input from, uh...
Well, I think, I think in terms of fees, you have this, where you didn't have this before, which is what the Selectmen, it does say "may," but it's got some very specific requirements, and to me, if you fit into those requirements, which I think this does, then it indicates the Selectmen would, and they have already, with regard to the Habitat House, right? So, you have a little more, at least with this.
But that's one house, as opposed to two-hundred and, how much is it, two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand?
It's over a quarter of a million.
Yeah, that's a lot of money for us to...
If I would, if I could point out again, the applicant did pay all those fees in, in Phase One. If this was, if this land had been a three-lock subdivision, which would have been allowed under zoning, the fees would have been dramatically lower, it would have been a market rate house, and so it wouldn't have mattered. And, and the applicant did pay over quarter, almost quarter million dollars in these fees in Phase One. What we're dealing with is, as you know, whether a project is economic or uneconomic, and we are completely below what the state considers to be economic. This project is uneconomic every way you look at it, both Phase One and Phase Two, together and alone. However, because it is a community project, because the town, as the chairman mentioned, the land was donated, and the applicant's been working with the community, everyone's been working together through the CPC, the town, the state, private lending, to make this happen, and this is a community project. And as far as the infrastructure, I appreciate what you said about the beginning, Mr. Amara and Mr. Tool, but you wanted to make sure that the project wasn't half-done, you discussed other issues, you know, other projects where things had been delayed. Well, look at what's out there today. You have fifteen houses with the sixteenth about to be moved on, the roads are all in. There's your perfect example that this project, which is a community project, which is a hundred percent affordable, will not just get half-done. That's why, as I mentioned to you, all of the other money is lined up, but it's all contingent, it's all dominoes. If things get delayed, if you lose one piece, then you lose another piece, eventually you can, then can have a problem. In this particular case, I think there's ample evidence, you have a nonprofit corporation doing the work, community backing, I think there's ample evidence that this thing, this project, will be completed Phase Two as Phase One was, but, you know, once they start it, because they're not gonna start it, that's the thing, they, in their fiduciary duty as a nonprofit board, they can't start a project, they're not gonna be able to fund. That makes sense, it would be as anyone would do in, in, whether it's the government or nonprofit sector. So, you don't have to worry about it being half-done in the sense of you get start and get stopped. The issue is, does Phase Two get started and/or when? So, that's the concern we have, and, and I hear what you're saying about it's substantial to you, that you maybe have not done it in the past, but when you look at the scope of the project, look at the, what's designed, look at the plans, look at the numbers, and you have those numbers, we did submit those to you, and the fees are the fees, they're set forth by the town. I would respectfully submit that they're not substantial in this instance, in the overall project, scope of the project being economic or uneconomic, substantial change versus insubstantial, substantial, excuse me. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, it boils down to we think it's substantial or insubstantial.
I think...
I certainly would have liked a little more information as to the, to the numbers and what not that we might have been able to look at ahead of time to, again, not that I disbelieve anybody, but sort of nice to be able to hang your hat on evidence, okay, they are eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, twenty-three-thousand dollars in the hole.
And how did it happen?
And how did it happen, right? Did you rebalance the construction?
Well, we, we gave you the, we gave you the data for that, the three-page summary goes through at length, the, the, page three is the one that deals with the waivers, and it goes through at length the numbers, um, it goes through the process with the CPC.
You're talking about this document?
Yes, that document, yes. This is Letter C, I think, on page three, is the one that does the whole breakdown of the process.
Well, I, I wouldn't call this at length, I would call this sort of a summary of the situation, and it's very hard for me personally to make the decision, um, based on this, but I guess that's not an issue of substantial or insubstantial, so, because that, again, remains the crux of the issue here, of whether or not we continue the conversation. Um, and then the B waiver is, is another one, whether or not we think that's substantial or insubstantial. I have no, again, no problem with the Ha, uh, Habitat, you were, numbers, and et cetera, et cetera, and the cler, you were changing one other thing, I think, I can't remember what the second one was.
The number of units?
Yeah, the number of units.
Yes, right.
Very, very, I don't think anybody has a problem, you know, in terms of, not even a problem, but no one thinks that's substantial, correct?
No, I, I have a problem with finishing the infrastructure after all the houses are done.
Well, that, that, those are the two items, and it's not a money issue even, uh...
I know, I, I think sixty thousand dollars is not a huge amount of money.
Again, on...
That's gonna, that's gonna bump it up. Like, I don't, I think they should keep the infrastructure in first.
Okay, well, like, you know, again, i- is it substantial? Do we, are we gonna discuss, discuss it now? I mean, because again, there's statutory things we have to do if we think they're insubstantial. Um, the other all terms say it's insub, both are insubstantial, and we'll discuss it.
What was Ed Marshan's comment, that it was definitely a substantial change? Is that what I read?
Yes, Ed specifically, and I meant to dial him in, I could dial him in at this point.
But based on the fee waivers, right, that was his main reason.
And the infrastructure issue. Um, and again, I don't think there was quite enough clar, there was no clarification, never mind quite enough clarification as to why you don't wanna do the infrastructure first. And I think ninety percent of every subdivision that's successful that I've ever seen, you put in the roads, the sewer, I don't even know how you get building permits without the infrastructure in, frankly.
Well, you have to, you do, Mr. Chairman, with, with your permission, you have to do some of the infrastructure, but the way the condition is set up in the decision is, you have to do all of it and finish it first, and then start before you can build your first house. In any subdivision, you would start the infrastructure, but you'd be able to, once the road, let's say, went two-hundred feet, you'd be able to start getting building permits for the houses along the line, you'd be doing it at the same time. The way the condition reads, you have to put everything in completely before you can get one building permit.
Everything except the top coat.
Except the top coat, but...
We talked about at length about this, and I've never seen a sub, do, do the first two-hundred feet, and then, and talk about inefficient, and then come back and put the pipe back together and keep going? I, I don't even...
Well, no, no, they're not gonna do that. No, no, that's not the point at all. The point is that if you have a contractor, or you have the contractor, who's in doing the work, as the, as the road's progressing, they can start working on the houses as well, and you can be doing it all at the same time. It's not asking, you, you don't do the road and stop, they're putting everything in, but you can be working on the houses to get them up at the same time, you don't have to physically, so, if, if you don't change that condition...
I think that was a bad word.
Do you mind if I, uh, I'm, I'm gonna listen, but I'm just gonna dial it in, if you don't mind.
No, that's fine, that's fine. Kevin did speak with that last week, I, I think there was a...
I know that, that's why I...
I think there was a strong disagreement about what is substantial or not.
Would you like me not to dial it in? No, let me, let me just dial it in, because I...
We know what Ed's gonna say.
Okay.
And you know what I'm gonna say in response?
Right, yeah.
Well...
I, I commend, I may, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Everyone who's been involved in this, uh, Phase, Phase One, I think, was a great success. I've been there several times, I know people who've bought in there. I have, I have serious problems about the end of Phase Two with what you're proposing, and I'm not sure that I am comfortable to any degree making an economic decision like this without getting some, some higher-paid people from the town in the Antucket, like the Board of Selectmen, involved in this.
Are you referring to just the infrastructure or to the fee waivers?
The fee waivers.
Hey, Ed, uh, I'm, you're, you're on, I forgot to call you at the beginning, but listen up.
No problem.
Sorry, sorry.
Hi, Ed, it's Michael Amara.
Will you just, will you repeat what you said, Michael?
I was saying, I have a hard time, I, I was moved by Phase One, I am not moved by the fact that we're being asked to approve something because the, the building regulations and codes are gonna change in three weeks, and if we don't approve this today, the, the Phase Two's gonna become more, more expensive. And I also don't feel that we should be responsible for making the decision today, or maybe even at the next meeting, on, on reducing or, uh...
or maybe even at the next meeting, on, on reducing or getting rid of, of sewer fees and other fees that add up to a hundred and ninety-three thousand, six hundred dollars.
Yeah, I, Andrew, just to be clear, I don't necessarily have a problem with a new infrastructure plan. The reason I think it's substantial is because we're presented with no plan other than we want to do it all at once. You know, I just would like more evidence as to how, why, the contractor telling us, you know, this is the plan, we're gonna be putting roads in as we excavate, um, et cetera, or, or we, we need four building permits to make this work, or we need six, twenty-five building permits to make this work this way. It's just that the, the, that was a subs- in my opinion, a substantial issue for the board at the first go-around, um, the infrastructure being put in, being successful, you know, being ready. And I think there might just be a misunderstanding, or, or a lack of clarity in terms of what you've presented to us, which is nothing. So that's my problem with it, and...
If, if I might, Mr. Chairman, remember, as we discussed during the, the original presentations, you're standing in the stead of the other board, so in this case, we're discussing planning board issues, you know, road construction, subdivision, rules and regulations. Planning boards don't get into the level of detail generally as to how a subdivision's constructed. They review and approve the plans, which you had. You had all the plans. You had the subdivision plans, the grading plans, drainage, utility, road plans. You had all the plans. Your job is to stand in their stead. In this case, it's approving a subdivision. Now we're talking about how the subdivision's getting built. And I respectfully submit that that's more than what a planning board would normally do. And with all due respect, you, you said, "We asked for this, but we gave you nothing." Maybe I was not explaining it well, but both in writing and I thought today, I'm trying to explain what the additional costs would be to do it separately. Now, Ms. McCarthy said a minute ago that sixty thousand dollars didn't seem like a large amount of money in, in, to, to have it done separately, to continue. And, and that's all good and well, except sixty thousand, hundred thousand, hundred and ninety-three thousand. We're talking real money. And remember, this is a nonprofit developer doing a community project for which the community has put in massive support. I, I beg to differ with you respectfully. I think that sixty thousand, another hundred thousand for the building code, all these fees, that's very significant, and, and it's enough to jeopardize what the applicant's trying to do, which is create a Phase Two, which is as good as Phase One has been done and received in the community.
I, I, but I also think that in that discussion, I think, Ed, you may have just said it as well, but I think the condition that we had originally drafted might just need to be clarified, right?
That's all I'm saying, but I think that's a substantial change to, to... But again, if we are comfortable with making it an insubstantial change and then discussing it in much greater detail right now, um...
Can we take these apart at a time? Because I, I, my feeling would be that one and two are not substantial.
But it's unfortunate that it's wrapped into one.
Does everybody agree that one and two are, are, are insubstantial?
Yes.
Okay. So we don't have to talk about those, I don't think, anymore. I will say, back to what you were saying, Mr. Singer, that the... Maybe we're getting into unusual detail. I don't think so. But the planning board normally would require, um, not all, not all. I don't know exactly how the, the rules work anymore, but you have to do a certain amount of work to get a release of the lot.
Or post the bond.
Or post the bond.
Right.
Now, we, if, again, to me, that's a relatively substantial change to having you agreed to do all the infrastructure, and now you want to change it. It's not...
Well, the, the language of that condition, that sentence says, um, "No building permits for dwellings within Phase Two." I'm just gonna leave out Phase One for now. "No building permits for dwellings within Phase Two shall be issued until the infrastructure for the respective phase, including but not limited to water, sewer, and electrical, utility connections, curbing, sidewalks, common mailboxes, and all but the top coat of the street pavement, the finish coat, have been completed." So we're talking, the way this is written, you can't even pull a building permit. So absolutely everything down to, and that's not...
That's, that's kind of crazy.
That would not be normal in a, in a normal subdivision.
Mailbox, okay, we'll give up the mailbox.
No, no, but I think...
The mailboxes are in, well...
I think that was, I think that, I don't think that was the intent of the board.
Right. The intent was to make sure that the sewer, water, power, road, not, not top coated.
Right, but I don't think, I mean, not being able to get any building permit even started until the mailboxes are in is crazy.
Right, well, I'm, I'm just...
No, no, I'm wrong.
Yeah, that's what the decision, that's how it reads, so...
I think it's one of those things that in hindsight, you're like, oh, like, that was an unintended... The sixty thousand dollars that cost more was an unintended consequence of that condition.
I appreciate that. I agree with that.
And I think that...
We're trying to fix that.
Yeah, I think that we, but I think that can be fixed. I think that's like a, that's a good drafting issue. I don't see that as significant.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, while you're doing that, and ladies and gentlemen behind me have stood up and sat down a couple of times, could I ask them to speak for a little, and then so we can...
Absolutely. Let, let me get Ed back on the line. Yeah, you back there?
I'm back on.
Sorry.
Hi, my name's Bethany Amian. I'm a Nantucket Housing Authority Commissioner, recent this year. And I'm also an affordable housing lender at Cape Cod Five. We financed fourteen of the fifteen houses in Phase One. I know every homeowner by name firsthand basis. Phase Two, probably pre-qualified every single applicant to the lottery. I lost count. They said they had over ninety from, from Cape Cod Five. Um, these are one-on-one applications. We meet with people who know them quite well. They're very, very excited about this lottery next Thursday. Very concerned about the word jeopardized here today. I can't go back to sixty-six people who have numbers and explain to them what is significant that you're talking about today, and what is setting a precedent. This development has set a precedent on this island. There won't be another one like it. A nonprofit developer, every house is affordable, year-round residence. We have a one-point-five million dollars coming from the state that just came in October. Is anybody gonna reassure me we're getting one point five million next year? Um, time is of the essence right now for these people. One hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars is not significant. You can't build me half a house on this island for that much money. Every planned production report we have done, every housing needs assessment study we have done on this island, you know what they say? Fee waivers. That's where your local community can chip in. Town meeting, you all are, are present. There is huge momentum on this island from the citizens for affordable housing. It's falling on your shoulders today. I apologize if you feel as blindsided as I do to have to come here today. However, it's Christmas. We have a lottery next week, folks. We have people to get in before next, the end of next year, 2017. We don't know where rates are going. We don't know where additional funding's coming from. We don't know if these twenty-two people are ever gonna get their way into this last section of road at this development. Phase One could not have been done better. It set the gold standard on this island. Beautifully constructed, on time. The families are absolutely thrilled. I am sorry this is falling on your shoulders today. I don't like it either. However, it is not insignificant, and you're not setting a precedent. There won't be another forty B of this many homes that you have to grant fee waivers for. So I respectfully disagree with, with the previous statements, and I encourage you today to waive the one hundred and ninety-three dollars in fees, as many other towns across the Commonwealth do on a regular basis, and let Phase Two move forward for the benefit of our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Ken Bogren, President, Chairman of the Community Preservation Committee. I wanted to speak to two things. Number one, with respect to the fees. The memo that you were looking at earlier represents the directive of the Board of Selectmen relative to the waiver of fees as to nonprofits doing affordable housing. We have had a significant amount of support for this particular project, and we've also done some support with the African Meeting House. And earlier this year, the Board of Selectmen, in fact, waived all of the fees, similar fees, with respect to that particular project for that nonprofit. What, what the Community Preservation Committee's role is, is, is to assess the needs of the community relative to the three areas that, that we have responsibility for: affordable housing, open space, and historic preservation. In doing that assessment this year, it became very clear that affordable housing is the most critical need within this community. And as a result, what we have done is we've done something that we've never done before. We assessed over fifty-four percent of the total funds available to us to the affordable housing category. We, in fact, allocated an additional three hundred thousand dollars to the HAC project at Saitzun Path. And we've allocated from community funds over two million dollars to this project because it is an absolutely unbelievable project. And so I, I, I ask you to take on the responsibility of the Board of Selectmen that has been delegated to you. They've led by example and have indicated that they have waived these fees for other nonprofits: Habitat, African Meeting House. It is, you're not setting a precedent on your part by waiving them. And by waiving them, you, in fact, allow this project to go forward. So I please ask you to not think that this is significant, but in fact, to make this decision that is going to allow us to proceed with the housing lottery next week and to proceed moving forward with the creation of twenty-two additional affordable homes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Renee Sealy, Director of Nantucket Housing Authority. I too just, I'm not pleading, I'm begging. I'm begging you to, right now, be, be politically courageous. Don't interfere with the momentum of something that had, that we're so proud of as a community. And if you could meet the families that have, that live in these homes, and the twenty-two that will be living there in the future, the hundreds of people, we went to the information meeting. It was a hundred and fifty families and their children in this room, and we can't lose momentum. And I can't stress enough that we are so lucky to have the Housing Assistance Corporation, a nonprofit developer, come to our rescue. There aren't a lot of people that are interested in doing affordable housing because of all the minutia, all of the complicated, it's the most complicated thing to do. It's not like an everyday development. It, everything rides on one thing after another. It is a domino. It, it's so, it's so reliant on, of, of, you know, assistance, financial assistance. It's, it's not one that you can accomplish in a community and hope the developer can just come pull it off. Everything, everything's gotta give together. So I, you know, I could stay up here forever. I just beg of you, please don't. This is, this is an insubstantial change. When you look at the total, overall scope of the money of this project, insubstantial when... What's gonna be substantial are the hearts that are broken when the lottery gets canceled. And we can't move forward because they need to have their chips in order before they can move forward. And what might seem like small dollars are big dollars. It's not the point. The point is the momentum we've worked up, and, and I hope that you're as proud as the rest of this community is with this development, but to think of the families, please.
Thank you. Okay.
I just, can I just say, whatever, whatever we do decide, I mean, I feel for the families. I feel for, I, I get it, the momentum. I, I get all of that. But we also, we're a regulatory board, and we have a responsibility to follow the process. And if we, we, I don't know that there would be anyone that would challenge it, but if we make a decision that's a feel-good decision without following the rules, then we put ourselves, the town, whatever, at jeopardy, right? I mean, that's, that's our, that's our, our, I mean, and correct me if I'm wrong, but that's our job. I, I'm not convinced, I'm not as concerned as Ed or Michael. I'm not convinced that it's, um, substantial, the, the hundred and ninety-three. And I think we do have the ability from the Board of Selectmen, and I would feel comfortable, um, making that decision because that, we are standing, we sit in place of all of these other boards so that the applicant in this situation doesn't have to go to seven thousand different boards to get things accomplished. Um, we have that power. The Board of Selectmen has. I agree with Jim. They've given this directive. I think that this fits within it. I think it's a little scary because it is a large amount of money, and it's something that we haven't done before. And we've been, as a board, um, you know, with Abrams, uh, Quarry, like, we've, we've been, been pretty steadfast about, about fees. That said, this is 100% affordable. It's, you know, it's, it's sort of, and it's 1% of the total budget. I mean, I, I think I could see my way to moving forward with it. But, but I, I'm only one person, and we have two longstanding board members who are very concerned, and that, you know, they have much more experience and have done these projects many more times than I have. So I defer to their knowledge on this. I don't want to put us in a situation that's...
You don't have to defer to us.
No, but I, I mean, I li- I listen to what you guys say because you've been doing this for a generation. I mean, decades.
I'm not sure about, about one thing you said, that the Selectmen have given us the authority to make the decision. I don't think they have.
Well, they've given themselves...
Specifically said, the Board of Selectmen have that.
But we are, we act, we act, sorry, I missed hope.
Well, all, Mr. Chairman...
We've never, we've never done, and we've always had them make the decision because it's their money.
Right.
And they have made that decision.
I just think we don't have the luxury. I think if this was October, I would be like, yes, we should have the Board of Selectmen actually make the decision.
I disagree with you 100%. They've known, they, they submit, they knew in October they got their money. They submitted to us in November. In that, in the, that period of time, they certainly could have gone to the Board of Selectmen. Get us a letter saying, yeah, we wholeheartedly...
That's true.
...support this idea. It would have been fairly straightforward. And, you know, I, again, I, I hear you. I know people who live in the subdivision, and I'm very, we're ecstatic about it. But again, I, I, I think this was a little lack of, of effort, frankly, and to, for us to just, everybody says 1% is no big deal.
It's a lot of money.
It's no big deal on the other side, then.
Right, right.
I mean, if you want to make that argument, I'm not making that argument. But I think it would have been fairly straightforward to get a directive from the Board of Selectmen.
Is it too late to do that?
Could you do that by yourself?
Could you do that, and could we just have a short, special meeting to do it, or something? I mean...
Or could we...
Can I make a suggestion here?
Yes.
One way possibly to think about this is they've asked for three modifications. I didn't hear the discussion in terms of Habitat doing only three, but I'd say that's a non-issue.
Non-issue.
The other is the, um, over roadway, the construction of the roadway. The ZBA is responsible for reviewing public safety issues. That's why you put, that's why the ZBA spends so much time trying to understand how the phase and, of Phase One and Phase Two would work. I think there's probably, as the chair said, a need for clarification as to what it is you're actually, uh, HAC is asking for. It seems to me that you could, uh, grant that approval subject to a condition that HAC submit a plan in providing more details on how it intends to do that. And similarly, I think if the ZBA were disposed to it, they could, there's no question. I mean, ZBA has the authority to waive fees. However, I can tell you, in all of my experience with forty Bs, certainly recent experience within the last ten years, ZBAs do not waive fees unless they get a clear signal from the chief executive, which in your instance is the Board of Selectmen, to waive the fees. So it seems to me, and again, one of the issues here, the town has contributed a huge amount to this project. Everybody's acknowledged that. I think the number's four million dollars plus the land. So this is another 200,000, more or less. It seems to me you could vote, subject to HAC submitting, a support letter from the Board of Selectmen, and the burden should be on HAC to get the Board of Selectmen. If I were the developer on that, that's the way I would have proceeded, because I know ZBAs don't like to, don't feel comfortable giving away the town's money.
So would that timing work?
In, in response to that, Ed, this is Andrew. While, while I do believe that you, as a board, have authority to grant waivers, as Ed mentioned, whether or not anybody else in town has said something, 760 CMR is pretty clear. I don't have any problem with the... have any problem with the suggestion that he has. And if you were willing to vote to grant those fee waivers, I have two suggestions. One, if you're willing to vote to grant the fee waivers, the three fee waivers that we requested, on the condition that the Board of Selectmen vote to support, endorse, you know, something. We will certainly try to reach out to the Selectmen. And if you apologize if we should have, if you would have preferred we'd done that before, timing, it just didn't work out, but in hindsight, we're happy to go do that if it's, if you vote on a condition for that. As for the infrastructure, and as Ms. McCarthy mentioned, maybe it's just a language issue we have and/or you wanted a plan. Since construction's not going to start, you know, immediately over the winter, what we could do, if the board's willing to vote on the first two changes that you have no issue with, and the fee waivers on that conditional request, we could withdraw the request for the infrastructure change to condition F7 now. We can have a plan done, we can do something, we could come back to you in January or February for that. So if that would help, we'd come back in January, you know, with that. So if that would help, we could withdraw F7 if you'd vote for the other three with that condition, then we could try to keep moving this forward. And we would appreciate, you know, your consideration of that.
Withdraw F7, so you can go ahead and get your building permits.
No, no, no. How do you get a building permit in this town in two weeks?
Right, so how does that help?
No, that's not what he's saying.
Probably if you submit before the permit change, they'll let you go under the old permit.
Yeah.
We're talking about for the building.
So they can get them in before January 1st, they can go under the new, the old code. That's what they did a while back when they changed the stretch code.
They will have to tell the city not to...
Yeah, it would just be submit. They wouldn't have a 2016.
But does that, so when you're saying withdraw, you're saying withdraw the request to change.
But they gave some leeway the last time. As long as it was in there within a certain amount of time, I think they allowed you to go under the old permit. Because they can't...
Have you researched this, by the way?
Because Steve can't tell you how long it's going to take to get a permit issued. So that's why I think he was giving people some leeway.
Just curious, because there's no way you can get a permit.
No, no, we're not, I just asked Mr. Horvitz, I'm not a construction person. What their understanding is, is they need to, it's getting it in, it's filing the permit applications. Clearly, I wouldn't, I doubt they're going to be issued on Christmas, you know, but it's getting them in. If they turn out to be wrong, that's something they'll have to deal with. But that's a separate function for today. But it would let them get them in so that at least they have that opportunity. It would also let the lottery and everything happen. So what we pulled, Ms. McCarthy was asking it when we were all talking, what I'm suggesting is we pull the request for condition F7 change, which is doing the infrastructure first. And in response to Ed Marchand's comment, you can get a plan, we can come back in for a minor amendment on that. So what we would ask you for today only would be the two, you know, the two ones, no one cares about, or no issues with, I apologize, no issues with. And then the fee waivers on the condition. And that would be all you'd be voting on today.
So how would you be able to get your building permit in if the infrastructure thing isn't, the clause isn't waived?
I don't even see how you can get a building permit applied for if you do not have a sewer connection.
Right.
You don't have a sewer permit, how can you possibly get a building permit?
Or even submit.
Again, we're...
Forget if you're paying for it or not, you still have to get the permit.
What we're talking about, again, this is beyond my pay grade, but in listening to the conversation, we're talking about submitting the application.
Yeah, but you have to have that stuff to submit.
You need a sewer entry permit to submit an application.
And if that turns out to be the case when they talk to Steve in the Building Department, so be it. That doesn't change what we're requesting though, which is the request for the waiver so we can close that budget gap.
What it changes is you're telling us our feet are to the fire, because you can't get a building permit before the, I don't think, I mean, I've always thought you need to have a sewer entry permit.
You do. Yeah, you need a sewer entry permit. But if they're willing to take that, I mean, if they're not, if they're going to go for it without it and try to talk to Steve, that's up to them.
Yeah, no doubt, but I'm just saying, I would appreciate not, someone, an African not coming in here and saying, you know, we have two days to get our application in, and if you don't vote on this immediately, it's all on your head. Everybody who needs an affordable house is not getting it, and it's all on your head. I think that's totally unfair. You did not go to the Board of Selectmen, which would have been, you had two months. So don't, you know, just don't do that. It's unfair to have everybody stand up here and say, you know, it's on the ZBA's head because nobody's going to be able to move in. Anyway, that's just me.
No, I agree. I think, I totally agree, but we're still stuck in the, we still are in the place where we are. We have to deal with the situation that's in front of us. We can't, we can't change the stuff that happened in the last two months or whatever.
So I'm trying to figure out a way to make it work.
I agree with Ed in that, that was, going to be my suggestion, was that we, if we could work our heads around approving it with a condition that it has, the Board of Select would have to agree to it because...
I agree.
Yes, there are 22 families who are looking for housing, but we are a town of how many thousands that it's not, it's not fair to put that on us.
Not only do I not think it's fair, I mean, I think the ZBA did, you know, has been 100% supportive of this project and throughout. But, you know, again, it just, it just... Whatever. Let's follow the board. Go ahead, you go ahead.
I just think it's a bit self-moral. After all we went through and the amount of time we spent on this, to try to do a cram down here in one meeting. I don't think it's right. And I don't think it's right for the people that are going to be living in these houses. Because they're at risk at the end of this project, the way I see it.
I agree with the cram down thing.
And I also want to make the point, I mean, there were countless meetings where we sat through item by item, we went through it, spoken length on each topic. And I want to say that we stressed, please don't come back and, you know, say you need to waiver, like, pretty much what you're bringing in today. I think there were at least two or three members that said, please don't come back and do this. And this is exactly what's happened.
Right, the other thing I don't understand is, I, like, the infrastructure, and I guess maybe I was a bit callous when I said about it was being like not a significant amount of money, the $60,000. Like, that, okay, so that's going to increase 60,000. I don't understand how, like, how is there $825,000 or $23,000 that was, after all of the work we went through, that that went that far over budget? I mean, that seems really crazy to me.
Well, that's all I'm saying, is I'd like to have seen some numbers instead of, again, coming in here...
And how did that happen with all the care that we put towards this? If the, if the infrastructure, which I thought would be the biggest impediment, only costs $60,000, I mean, that seems insignificant. No, not the infrastructure, I mean, the staggering requirement that we had, that we put in, the condition we put in, that that increased the cost of the infrastructure $60,000. How, that seems insignificant to me in the age 23.
I'm assuming they're saying that the supervision, the additional supervision of the infrastructure is going to run them $60,000.
I think it might just be the cost.
If you had to put the infrastructure in, and want to build at the same time with the same excavation company, I get it. You can dig the holes as you put in the road in, but...
Some damage to the curbs and stuff like that.
To some extent, but, you know, again, even the planning board, which Mr. Singer pointed out, we are, you know, you only get a release of a certain number of lots, you don't get a release on 100% of the lots.
Well, no, you don't get released, but don't forget, most of that infrastructure work has been, has been completed. And most of the, you know, all the connections into the town system have been completed, the sewer ejector pump is done, the electrical connection into the grid has been done. So what they're doing now is only stuff that's in that specific area. There are no more connections into the street, they're not, you know. So that's, so that's one reason why I would think we could work our way through to that point of it. But I have some real, you know, I have some real reservations about the timing, why it's over budget, did they put it out to bid again? Or are they just relying on their general contractor to say, listen, we want more money? Consequently, this, you know...
Yeah, well, again, I don't think any of us are making that determination, we just don't have any information to make it. So anyway.
So then, so what do we do?
Ed? You there?
Yes, I know that.
Okay. So I guess your suggestion stands that we can somehow conditionally vote on some of these things potentially?
No, I would accept, I would accept, I would accept Andrew's offer to withdraw the request for modification of the infrastructure.
Right.
So that you'd have one less condition.
And then we can actually talk about that one.
And that would, you know, put a little bit more leverage on them getting that in a format that's applicable to you. And the other issue is that, I think, you know, the only other real issue is to waiver on the fees. And I think that as long as you condition that upon a requirement of the state submitting a letter from the Board of Selectmen endorsing that, that that's satisfactory. I would agree, I have to say that I think this has been a rushed job and could have presented, could have been presented more clearly. And I think this is a board that's always been approachable, and certainly I've always been approachable. But that's neither here nor there. I don't understand the building permit issue either. My experience has always been that if you're changing regulations, the only way you're protected is if you have a permit. And normally we've had to demonstrate that we've got a sewer tie-in before the building inspector will issue a permit, but that's, that's their...
That's their issue.
But you can't, this is the only sort of monetary relief they could ask the ZBA for. If they run into other issues, you know, they're going to have to find other source of funding.
And I don't think anybody wants to see that happen.
I mean, the other alternative was to modify the mix of units and generate additional funding by having more 150% here. And whether they can do that under their current subsidy programs or not, I don't know nothing about it. And I'm also reluctant to go into the details of their planning, you know, whether or not sufficient profit is generated on phase one, the makeup for this. I would, I would probably kick the can to the Board of Selectmen and leave it at that.
I mean, as a board, do we agree that if the selectmen want to waive the fees, we're okay with it?
I see that as the will of the town, so I'm okay with that.
With no further drill down on the, it's up to them to drill down on the numbers.
Well, it's their decision, right?
Period, end of discussion, okay.
Period.
All right. So just to be clear, the infrastructure change is off the table.
I would request to withdraw the change to condition F7.
Thank you.
I would think that's okay.
So that would be part of anything. The habitat issue is okay with us?
Mr. Chairman?
Could I ask, sorry, on F7 though specifically, Mr. Horvitz was just mentioning, because we're going to try to do the plan that you asked for, rather than withdraw F7, could we continue that discrete point to your January meeting so we just don't have to re-filing with Eleanor and then we'll get the supplemental information?
Can we do that?
If not, I'll send a new letter tomorrow, you know, whatever's...
I don't have a fundamental problem with that, if that's kosher.
If it's procedurally okay, I'm fine with that.
I need to do that.
Do you think we can do that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we'll vote on each one separately. Does that make sense?
Yes.
All right, I, I've lost my various papers.
Do you want me to make a motion for the first one?
Yeah, make, please.
Okay. So for, for the request, number one, change applicant...
You want to vote on this, I don't think I won't be here next month.
Change applicant habitat lot mix, so the applicant is responsible, 10 to 80% MAI lots. I make a motion to approve the relief request.
Okay.
And that's the change in condition F2.
F2, sorry. I didn't have the F numbers.
Yep, okay. So the motions were made to change, to amend, if you will, condition F2. Is there a second?
A second.
Karam seconds it. Okay, the voting members again.
I'm not going to vote because just since we're not going to be here, I think Jeff and I are not going to vote.
I think you can vote.
Yeah.
So would Jeff and Jim be the...
No, no Jeffs, no me.
One, two, three, four, five. No Jeff or Lisa. Okay, so on F2, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
No.
No, all of them, fair to say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Susan?
So do we have to make, so make a motion to continue the requested change to condition F7 to the January 12th meeting?
Yes, thank you. Is there a second? Go ahead, Ed.
We just want to mention, they need to grant an extension number on modification of the place you make, you are required to make a determination in 20 days. So you just want a extension from Andrew Singer on that, which I'm sure he'll be willing to provide.
Yes, Eleanor has one, thank you.
You're good with the...
Yeah, I'm going to sign, yeah, for F7, I'm going to sign it to whatever Dave and Eleanor put in.
Okay. Will you second that again, Karam?
Second.
Karam seconds it. Just, the only other discussion is that we may have a quorum problem on January 12th, and we would obviously let you know ASAP.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, so that motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? No. All of them, fair to say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And so then, is there a section for that one, fee waivers or no?
Well, no, there was one other, right?
The change in condition 19, I don't know, you've already voted on it, that was just to, I talked to Eleanor, just to have it in the document, yeah.
Okay. So we are going to, I make a motion to grant the select fee waivers as requested upon the condition that the Board of Selectmen approve said request and provide a letter of support to the, to the decision.
Absolutely.
Do you want a second of Thursday?
Yeah, do you want a second of that again? Karam seconds it again, go ahead, Michael.
I would prefer that we put the onus on the Board of Selectmen 100%.
Okay, I agree.
We are not, so if I'm hearing you correctly, we're not granting anything.
That's correct.
We're not, we're, in essence, only...
We're going to, should we continue it?
Continuing it.
We're taking the lead from, we can give, as far as I'm concerned, we could give Eleanor authority to sign it, to get it signed, if the Selectmen approve it.
I think you have to, and Ed Marchand is still on the line, the Selectmen, we understand you want them to issue a letter saying we approve it and we support it, but you have the authority, you actually have to take the vote to grant them. The Selectmen can't grant these under the comprehensive permit, so I, but I think if you do it as a condition as mentioned, if you vote to grant them on the condition that the Selectmen do this, if the Selectmen don't do it, your condition's unsatisfied, they're, we don't have the waiver.
But I don't want the Selectmen to think that we've approved this conditionally upon their saying, okay. I want to say this is their job to approve it.
So we say we...
This is a bit of a semantic issue.
It's your job, though.
You want them to show the political will to do it.
It doesn't have to be our job to do this.
Oh, it is under state law.
We have the ability to do it.
Oh, correct.
Yeah.
But you're, but you're the only one who has the ability. What you're asking for, if I understand, is that the Selectmen endorse the request so that you know that they are behind it 100%.
No, we can push it back to the Selectmen, we've done that before, that's what we did with Abrams Quarry too. We gave it to the Selectmen to do. Yeah. It's a 48.
We've done it more than we did it several times.
It might not have challenged, I don't know if it completely complies with state law.
Okay, let's change the motion then. I make a motion that if the Board of Selectmen grant fee waivers for phase two of this, for the fee waivers requested for phase two of this project, the zoning board will accept them?
I would like a comprehensive permit.
We'll modify the comprehensive permit.
Second.
Does that, does, okay, Michael seconds it, thank you. Ed, does that seem...
Kosher?
Kosher, for lack of a better word?
I think so, I think it accomplishes the purpose.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can I ask Ed, or ask you, Mr. Chair of the Board, does that, the way that motion is phrased, does that mean there would have to be another vote by the board?
No.
I don't think so, because I think what that vote says is, if the Board of Selectmen agree to a waiver of those fees, the ZBA shall modify that condition, that states all fees are payable.
That gets us there.
Okay, and then therefore it would be in the second amended document that I did, which we'll revise, and then it would just be signed after, at that point. Okay, thank you for the clarification.
I'd modify that.
Great.
I think the critical thing here is that, legally, the ZBA has the authority to waive fees. We all know that, that's not going to, that's, the way it works practically is always the Board of Selectmen who make a decision as to whether or not fees payable to the town shall be waived. So where the board is not asking you, is they're telling you that it's your responsibility to go to the board, give them whatever information they need to make an informed decision, and if they say yes, we're willing to waive the fees, then you present that one to the ZBA, and the ZBA will modify that condition, and I don't know the exact condition, but I think the only way I would recommend for what's, to have a condition that says, no customary fee shall be waived. But I think that's relatively easy to accomplish.
Ed, you, Ed.
To do that.
Sorry, Ed, you might not have seen it, but I, I actually just, there was no condition discussing it. I, I proposed a condition 35 in the document that says what that is, and we can make sure you get a copy of it, but that's where we could put it, or I would suggest we could put it.
Right, but there was a, or maybe, maybe the decision was silent, Andrew.
It, it was.
Didn't mention any, any payment of fees, but very often in the waiver section, there'll be an affirmative statement that says, no fee shall be waived. I just think that, that, that once the board makes that, once the Board of Select makes that decision, is that relatively easy for the board to make the modifications to the comprehensive permit.
So, we're good to vote on that, Michael?
As far as I'm concerned.
Okay.
Susan made the motion?
Susan made the motion, Michael seconded, all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's it.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. All right, thanks, Ed.
Are you guys, I, I have to go.
I know you do. Let me just throw a couple things at everybody while you're here. There are some very screwy bylaws. Do we have any interest in, as ZBA, pursuing that notion of if you're over, you can keep going over Adnau's account?
I, I agree with you 100%, and I think it's a local.
Okay, so we'll pursue that.
Yeah, I, I kept it out.
I could throw in with a bunch of changes, somebody had a big problem.
I also think that we should very clearly define what a shed is, so we don't continue to see these pool cabana sheds that have, you know, and, or.
Well, that wasn't even a zoning shed.
I know that.
What, do we have a position on that, or what is a shed?
I think, I personally think a storage shed should be, you know, basically the.
All right.
Well, it's a cabana shed, the way.
I'm willing to help you guys, like, help work on it, so just email me what they are and.
Can I just say quickly, please, do we, that if you are going to present something, if you would need to go through the planning board of Citizens Articles, we're done, done, wild. So the planning board has their own deadline, it's January 18th, I believe, when everyone can be finalized by the Board of Selectmen, so if you're going to be on behalf of the ZBA to discuss some potential changes, that could happen with Leslie.
Okay.
So, besides me and.
Yeah, anybody else interested in doing?
Yeah, I'll help if you want.
Anybody?
If you need assistance, yeah.
I also think there should be a much clearer definition of porch.
I was just going to say that.
Porch.
I think that was.
I mean, because we're just, that, that wasn't the first one we've seen, and it won't be the last.
Being taken advantage of.
So, and I'm sure there are others, if anybody wants to, to think of them. But those are a few that I can.
I see there's a zoning article, it's a limit to change basically the ground cover ratio.
How so?
The load distance.
To make them.
I just, I just scanned it today in the paper.
Oh, you mean.
It's a Linda Holland article.
To, to reduce them.
To reduce the ratios.
Well, without, reduce the size, now, what does that tell you?
What do you mean?
Reduce the size of buildings that can be built in the block.
So that's reduce that ratio. Right now, an undersized block, recommend a lot 2, a lot 3, that's minimal 4,000, so if you go up 2,000.
2,000, that's right, which I thought was a pretty good change.
Is that what she wanted to do, or change to 3%?
I haven't read it, but I know it's, it's, no, it's a serious change.
So she wants to go from 2,000 back down to 1,500?
No, I didn't read any numbers at all.
She wants to go from 3% to something like.
And what Eleanor's talking about is pre-existing non-conforming lots. The old, there was 1,500 or the ground cover ratio, now it's 2,000 or the ground cover ratio.
I didn't even know the 2,000, I thought it was always 1,500 average.
It just changed it.
Right.
I wish, I was saying to Ed, I wish there was a way to prevent sub, like, the subdivision that happened at 47 Cliff Road, but I guess there's no way to do that. That's just a shame.
I mean, it's, it's, there's a big difference between A and R and AR, and maybe, well, they would have gotten one less lot with approval not required.
Right. It doesn't seem to be a great impediment, approval required these days.
Well, your neighbors can, can take shots at you, with approval not required, they can't.
Yeah, true, but.
It would just be a shame if that whole side of Cliff Road got developed like that. It's just destroying a historic part of the island, though.
Well, I'd like to, and I don't think this is a zoning bylaw, but I don't think you should be able to downzone from two, two acres to one acre in a spot area, just because people want to give some land to their kids.
Well, that's, that, you know, falls under HCA, there's nothing, you know.
HCA?
OTC.
I don't know.
Home court advance.
Oh, yeah. No doubt, no doubt at all. Anyway, how, when was that, was that done at a, that was done, when was that done?
This past week.
At the special town meeting?
Special.
Yeah, I personally think they should do away with the special town meeting. It's just, of course, booey, but anyway.
Has anything ever not passed in special town meetings?
Well, the sewer didn't pass, $83 million that you would have been paying forever, it's not moving.
The January meeting.
Oh, yeah, let's just poll everybody, you're not here.
I am out of town that week.
It's going to stay close to January 12th, just so you understand.
Huh?
We continue.
I am skiing.
We've continued, all these continue, it's been two that they took, so we'll have to have.
I can make any date on the prior or following week work.
Okay.
I can do.
I can't do the, the, the following week is fine, the prior week is fine. I can email all of you, but that's easier.
Yeah, that's definitely.
Well, let's just take a quick poll, we, we'll, I, I will be here the following week.
I mean, Susan's not here, and Mark is not here, so that's why.
Oh, I hear you.
The following week they're not here?
The following week, maybe.
Well, let's poll what we have here.
Let's try with the following week, because Lisa will be here, Jeff will be here, you?
I'm available any day that week.
Me, too.
The week, this would be the week.
I have no life.
It was the following week, the week.
What is it, the week after?
Yeah.
No.
I'm going to say okay for now, but that's like.
Yeah, take a look, 16th, the week of the 16th.
Are we, are we?
Yeah, can we, can we motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Karam makes it, Jeff seconds it, all those in favor say aye. Aye.